Ladies and gentlemen, please be up standing for the Chairman of Monmouthshire County Council.
Good afternoon councillors and welcome back to this afternoon's council meeting, please be seated. Before I start, I'd like to advise you that we do have an additional item 8b which you've all been sent by email etc, which you should know about, but just to remind you there is an 8b to be added to the minutes which is the council tax reduction scheme. Notwithstanding that, before we do start today's meeting, I'm aware this morning we had a little bit of confusion about when you can or cannot talk after an amendment has been moved. And I was directing as listed in a certain part of the constitution and one of my colleagues wanted to speak as listed in a separate part of the constitution and there was a slight conflict. And we were both right at the end of the day, but I've had discussion with our legal officers and I invite Rob Trant to make a statement.
Thank you Chairman, and perhaps it's an opportune moment to just clarify this and perhaps get this right, bearing in mind for what could be a rather lengthy meeting this afternoon and possibly the evening. Where motions are moved and where a motion is amended and voted upon, if members can just appreciate that that then becomes the substantive motion on which further debate will ensue. Okay, so if an amendment is carried, that becomes a substantive motion and a member may speak on that amended motion if they haven't already spoken on the amended motion. So I hope that's clear, if there's any points of clarification that's required during the afternoon, evening and maybe the night, I'm more than willing to sort that out, so I hope that helps. But I think the rule is where an amendment is carried, that becomes a substantive motion and that's where the debate will ensue and members will be able to speak on that item. I hope that's helpful Chairman, if there are any questions, please feel free to ask them, thank you.
Thank you Rob, following that we'll go into item one on the agenda which is apologies for absence. Do we have any apologies for absence, councillor Howarth?
Councillor Marshall, councillor Wintle and councillor Haywood will be joining us, thank you.
Are there any others? Not, thank you, we go to chairman's report and receipt of petitions. My report is as listed, there are no petitions being presented today that I'm aware of. I have circulated to all members an email on Afghan interpreters and relocation of. I was asked a question by one of the councillors at a previous meeting and I was asked could I find more information out. I have actually sent you all a copy of that now and for the purposes of the public, I will read the contents of that email so that everybody is aware. Initially the agreement was for Monmouthshire to host 10 singles, 15 couples and 15 families. But it's since been found out that there are a higher proportion of singles in the scheme and it's been confirmed that we would now host 21 singles, five couples and 10 families. This will be done over a two-year period with approximately three people arriving every month. We're in the process of setting up meetings with relevant departments such as education, housing, social services etc around the logistics of how we deliver the programme as well as setting up a steering group and I've asked as your Armed Forces Champion to be part of that steering group. We've initiated discussions with Displaced People in Action, DPIA, a third sector organisation that specialises in integration support for migrants in Wales. This includes orientating them to the local area, helping set up bank accounts, applying for national insurance numbers, job searches etc. The Ministry of Justice has sent through the grant agreement form and we are anticipating with proper planning that we will welcome our first set of translators end of March, early April. We've since received an update from the Ministry of Justice highlighting that there are 12 local authorities participating in the scheme, one in Wales which is Monmouthshire, five in Scotland and six in England. To date 55 individuals, that's 36 staff plus family members, have arrived in the UK to participate in local authority areas. So if there are any further information in due course, please come to me as your Armed Forces Champion and I will endeavour to give you the information, so I hope you're satisfied with that councillor. Okay, that is all I have on the petitions and my report. And so we go to item three on the agenda which is to receive declarations of interest. Have we got any declarations of interest? None received, sorry, oh councillor Taylor, sorry councillor, I didn't see.
Just that it notes mega school in the IMB minutes and I declare interest because I have a child at that school.
Thank you for that clarification councillor. And no other declarations of interest in which case we move to item four, public forum items that have been none received. And we move on rapidly to item number five, notices of motion, none received. And we move on to item six on the agenda, receive the minutes of the following meeting. 6a Democratic Services Committee held on the 1st of September 2014. And I will ask the chairman councillor Debbie Blakewell to introduce.
Thanks Chair, yes as Chair of Democratic Services I just want to present these minutes as a true and accurate account of the meeting on the 1st of September, thanks.
Thank you councillor, any comments councillor Howarth?
Chairman, as a member of that committee, may I ask on page seven there of that meeting, we seem to be still encountering problems with this chamber. We are being directed to use this chamber as the sole event because we do engage with the public here. Can we have some reassurances that the chamber itself will be brought up to a standard so it's workable for every member? And members of the public also use this chamber who do attend meetings. It's still not resolved, the ongoing issues and it is highlighted within the minutes of Democratic Services, reference to the chamber and as you please note the meeting date, we still are some months now from that meeting and we haven't resolved the issues. Can I have some clarification or some guarantees that we can bring the chamber up to 21st century, thank you.
Well I think those comments, we receive your comments councillor and unless the Chair of the Democratic Services Committee wishes to comment on that, whether we take that forward.
Just generally it's on an action plan which is a committee we keep looking at and we know that we need to keep chasing it up and it hasn't been rectified yet, so it's still on the agenda and it's ongoing really.
Thank you councillor, any other comments councillor Fox?
Just one Chairman, just I note that the committee will certainly be looking to take their meetings out and around the county. And I would just encourage at this point Chairman that this is the seat of democracy and this is the chamber which gives us a portal if you like to the world through our live streaming. And could I encourage the committee to think very strongly about retaining their meetings here so that they can be publicly accountable and open to the public instead of, I know it's well meaning, circulating around the county, thank you.
Thank you councillor, any other comments?
Just on a point, just out of curiosity if I'm allowed to ask, how many people actually view this? Have we got any statistics on the viewing figures, the ratings if you like?
I'm afraid I don't have those councillor, but I'm sure the officers can find out and send you an email. Right, so okay councillors, so are you minded to receive these minutes, all those in favour? Thank you, we move on to item 6b which is Internal Monitoring Board minutes of the 5th of December 2014. And I invite the leader councillor Peter Fox to introduce.
Thank you Chairman, as usual members, I'm presenting to you the minutes of the meeting of the 5th of December for your information. As I've repeated in the past, every group is represented on there and hopefully understand exactly where we are on our improvement journey and they're here for adoption Mr Chair.
Any comments councillors, councillor Francis Taylor?
Just the Chair on, so it's page two of the minutes, or page 13 in your pack, where we note that compared to similar schools, we still have some way to go. I think it's important and that we also noted that members, I think this is a comment by councillor Fox, should have the relevant information on the school's performance that we are being compared to or that are in the similar so that we can understand how far we have to go and that was discussed and I think that is important to note that in the minutes so that we indeed do get that information, thank you.
Thank you councillor, any other comments? If not, I'll move that, are we all happy to receive the minutes of the Internal Monitoring Board, please indicate if you do. As clearly carried, thank you councillors. And we move on to item seven which is to receive the Sacre Annual Report for 2013-14. I invite councillor Hackett Payne.
Thank you very much Chairman, I bring the annual report of Sacre to full counsel and ask for it to be adopted.
Do you have any comments councillors? No, okay then, so are we all minded to receive those minutes, all in favour? Thank you, then we move on to the next item on the agenda which is item eight, Report of the Head of Finance and 8a in particular Revenue and Capital Budget 2015-16 Final Proposals. So I believe councillor Murphy would introduce that.
Yes, thank you Chair, I'll read a statement as usual because it's easier to do it that way. Mister Chairman, following an extensive round of engagement events started in the autumn and concluding with a series of public sessions and specific presentations to the Union, Schools Budget Forum, Diversity and Equalities Group and Access for All Forum etc, as well as Enscreptment Committee, Cabinet's presenting the budget proposals to council. Members will be well aware that the provisional indicators issued by Welsh Government last year turned out to be considerably more savage than portrayed at that time. Monmouthshire continues to be the lowest funded authority per head of population and a reduction in funding of 4.3% compounded by a further reduction in the settlement of £62,000 resulted in the authority having to deal with a budget gap of £5.8 million in 15-16 and a further prospect of some £10 million to find over the medium term. Cabinet continues to do all it can to support the council's main priorities of education, vulnerable people and the creation of job opportunities. The public told us that they would pay more rather than see services closed and accepted that it was inevitable that service redesign would figure substantially in the proposals. Officers have put a considerable amount of work into this process of identifying ways of increasing income and providing the services for less. In excess of £600,000 will be raised from initiatives to make money for council activities. Service redesign will contribute £1.1 million and changes in practice contribute a further £1.5 million. Education will see its ISB flatlined to keep at 2014-15 levels although schools with falling roles will see a reduction. However, some additional burdens will be placed upon education in that the pay increase and the alterations regarding pensions will have to be accommodated within that funding. This will prevent an additional pressure of £1.124 million falling to be found from the revenue budget. CYP as a whole is funded to the extent of £52.2 million and the services embrace the challenge to work together to cope with the additional burden. It is also the case that in Monmouthshire, despite our level of funding, more is spent by any combination of formula that you care to look at than the Welsh average by some margin. We have also protected education spending above the levels specified by Welsh Government by some £1.5 million over that period. There is some uncertainty relating to the proposals regarding to the saving of £120,000 within additional learning needs. There needs over the next few years to be an examination of how provision is made in the county and that process will come before select when proposals are made more evident. There are existing proposals and more clarification is needed before it's brought to select. However, in 15-16 the service has already identified savings that can be made early in that process. We want to support our schools to enable them to support these children. We need to ensure that our delivery arrangements are in line with our ALN policy and strategy and to this end, we clearly need to make sure that where possible, their learning should take place in their local schools. We have great and highly skilled staff within highly capable organisations and we must ensure that we spend less time and money on adversarial processes, expensive transport arrangements and out-of-county placements which will give rise to these savings. Children's services are under a lot of pressure and £900,000 is being allocated in additional funding to help deal with this pressure. Similarly adult services will also get a further £100,000 to help relieve pressures there. Despite the foregoing, there is still a gap to be filled and in line with the public feedback, Cabinet has been determined to retain services and like many other authorities and close the gap with an increase in council tax. It is proposed therefore that this should increase by 4.95%. On capital, the 21st century schools programme is progressing and there will be a need to spend some money to help create the hubs, prepare other occasions for greater activity. All requests for capital expenditure must be accompanied by a sound business case as the authority cannot accommodate additional potential borrowing unless fully supported. I'm sure that we're going to get some useful suggestions made this afternoon. Most initiatives though have a lead-in time, so I can assure members that any useful suggestions that are put forward will be seriously considered as part of our ongoing work on the medium-term financial plan and finding how we're going to deal with that £10 million gap that still faces us. Mister Chairman, there's a considerable amount of detail in the report before us, so I shall stop at that point except to say that Cabinet colleagues and officers are here who will no doubt be able to assist in the debate where appropriate. However, before I do, I'm going to take the opportunity to thank all our officers for the incredible amount of work that's been put into this budget and especially Joy Robson and the team who keep everybody's feet very firmly on the ground. Mister Chairman, I look forward to the debate.
So could I hear your motion then please councillor? Do you have a second for that motion? Councillor Hackett Payne, thank you, councillor Simon Howarth?
Chairman, just before we make the start on the motion, can I just have a point of clarity really on due process that we've carried out with this, with the budget, capital and revenue? Some time ago during November, the Cabinet had a meeting, the mandates were discussed. There was no recollection there of the budget day which is today because as independents, we're all under the impression that in our diaries like every member here, the budget day was in February as normal. The only significant direction we've had, it was today, was from the notes, from the Cabinet meeting on the 7th of January to the issuing of their minutes from that meeting that the meeting would take place today. I spoke in that Cabinet meeting and said that we had mandates that we were working on and we actually wouldn't have time now to bring them forward because we were under the impression of the February date in the diary. Can I have some guidance really, I know where we are today Chairman, but I need some guidance really of due process here. And I know some of my members here just want to have a few seconds on this as well because they attended meetings after that date and have got evidence here that people were being encouraged to bring things forward but as we were told in that meeting, it was too late. So I just want some direction of how we, the answer I would like is, we're here now but I'd like to know why we've actually moved the February date to the January date, a valid reason.
Councillor Murphy?
Thank you Chair, well it was a long time before that that this programme was set out, it was set out in the autumn. And it was also stated at the time that the idea of having this debate early was so that if there was any lead-in time on any of the decisions made, officers would have the opportunity of doing it rather than wait until the start of the financial year and thereby losing time. There will also be a further meeting of this council on the 26th of February which will be the formal council tax setting date. But we've made it clear right from the start and it's been in all the public presentations what the timetable was. The reason for it is as I say, it's to get the examination of the budget done early so that we don't lose time in implementing any proposals.
Thank you councillor, I've got councillor Dimitri Batruni.
Thank you Chairman, unsurprisingly, I won't be surprised to hear that we wish to make amendments to the budget as proposed by councillor Murphy and the partnership group. I want to make it clear we wish to move the amendments as a package to displace current savings in certain areas on income generation. And I'll be more specific as I go on Chairman, we realise we cannot protect everything we would like to but it's not the world we live in and we understand that as a serious opposition. So our amendments are based on our values and what we would think is really critical to not cut or save money from. So these are three things Chairman and I've supplied the partnership with our budget proposals. But to restore the lights back into Monmouthshire, switching them back on, I should be more clearer. So there's a lot of concern amongst the community about switching off certain lights. There's anecdotal evidence about increasing crime rates. There's at least a perception out there in the community that they are more fearful with these lights switched off. And so we as a Labour group, we think it's important to switch them back on and restore those lights. The second one is education, we propose to put half a million pounds back into education from the proposal of £1.1 million cut. We would like to find all the money to have no cuts to the education budget but we can't find it. We've worked hard to try and find credible amendments to pay for our budget but we can only find it. only find half a million pounds to do so. But nonetheless, I think half a million pounds backed into schools will be welcomed by schools, given the pressure they're going to be under. And we think, and it's important, given Aston reports of years, given the pressures they're under already, we feel putting money back into schools is the right thing to do. And on that note, in a similar vein, additional learning needs. Chairman, we propose to reverse all cuts to additional learning needs, not one pound from additional learning needs children, that is what we propose. Chairman, but it's not good enough to say that Chairman and the partnership would say, oh, it's all good, we don't want to do a lot of things and they'd be right to say so without how we would pay for it. And it's an absolutely fair point to make Chairman and this is how we would pay for it. I make no bones, I won't apologise that we're focusing on income generation more than savings. I would answer that. First one is advertising revenue on all websites. Now, I know we've advertising on our current website, our main website, but I'm led to believe we own a number of other websites which we don't currently advertise on and we haven't...
Somebody's phone is going off, could you please turn that phone off please? Would you like to withdraw and turn it off or? Okay, thank you councillor. Thank you. Sorry councillor, please continue.
No problem, thank you Chairman. And so we would roll out that quicker and advertise on those websites. Now, I know, I understand they're going to be consolidated somewhat, some of them will not be existence in a couple of months, but we would roll out to the ones that will be advertising so we can generate a revenue of eighty five thousand pounds, which we've sort of asked whether that was even legitimate, even put that figure on it and we suggested that it was a legitimate figure that could be put on it. We would also advertise on council vehicles. Council in, I believe Devon, it could be Cornwall, have already started advertising on say their waste vehicles. And we have proposed advertising on those vehicles in Monmouthshire and other council vehicles where viable, Chairman. And based on the figures that that council that does it already in Devon, I believe, we believe we can generate another thirty thousand pounds from that. Thirdly Chairman, private consulting cap, well publicised. We spent one point seven million on a revenue side consultancy spend. We propose a cap of one point two million, saving half a million pounds. And Chairman, I would like to say at this point that it is a cap, but it can be broken if it's an emergency and the council leader can endorse it and sign and just say a rationale why the cap's been broken. And I'll just say a few words on this Chairman. There are absolutely legitimate things this private consultancy budget spends money on, absolutely run of the mill, day to day necessities the council runs on. There's absolutely no doubt about that Chairman. But I believe we should put a discipline into that budget where there's some areas, I could mention a few, which were done for laudable reasons, but where we could have been tighter on how much we spent on private consultants. And I think if we bring a cap, we would bring that discipline to the area, controlling spend in that area, which we can put back into schools, frontline services where we really need it Chairman. Fourthly, we would develop a leisure culture membership bolt on. Chairman, speaking to officers, talking about extending our leisure membership offer to include a bolt on whereby we would add in our cultural offer as well, museums, parks and so forth, or anyone who is willing to work with us, where you can increase your membership for your leisure, you can get some cultural services at the same time. And we believe we can raise additional revenue on that front Chairman. And fifthly, investment strategy. Our short term investments, I think close to ten million pounds with an average return, the last treasury outturn, the one I could last find, naught point five percent. I believe we move just maybe one million pounds over a phased period into investment portfolios, mainly land or asset based, whereby we invest in businesses or properties or, you know, legitimate revenue, interest generating portfolios. We're going to earn a much higher interest rate than naught point five percent. It's been put to me that a five percent to six percent wouldn't be unreasonable if we put it in such a portfolio. And I think we should do that and raise that revenue and that can bring in seventy thousand pounds Chairman. So that is additional revenues and a cap, saving us over seven hundred thousand pounds, which would pay for switching the lights back on, putting half a million pounds back into education and not cutting one penny from additional learning needs. And I just want to see an additional learning needs. I understand the need for reform, I've read the strategy, it's actually quite a good strategy, additional learning needs reform, but why do the reform and not give the schools the money or give the service the money? Do the reform with the money, back the reform with the money. And so we really feel strongly about this Chairman and that's why we've come up with proposals and why we've equality impact assessed it. They've been all equality impact assessed, I can send it to the deputy leader, I know he's very keen on these matters, all neutral, he'd be clear to know, he'd be keen to know. And that's why we've worked so hard on these credible proposals Chairman, because we realise it's tough times, but there are choices that can be made and choices based on our values. And thank you and I commend our amendments to the council.
Thank you councillor. Do you have hard copy of your package proposal? If you could pass that to the officer just so we got it on the record of what it is, because we have to read that out when we vote, so we know what we're voting for yeah? So that's your proposal, do you have a second for your proposal please? Councillor Farley, right, we're now debating that amended proposal, yeah, but put forward by councillor Batruni.
A declaration of interest is on page seventy five of this particular package, if I put it that way. And it's regarding the school traffic management improvements at Castle Park, where I do have no involvement, but Durham Primary where I have. And it's based on, was carried out on a similar building. Because my school is named in there, it's just a personal interest or you can let it go with the, you know, as a matter of course, we're all governors.
Okay, yes councillor Yonson, I think we'll just make a general declaration of interest. If you are a governor of any of the schools affected by this budget, then we'll do a blanket declaration of interest for each of the governors. As you're voting on the budget as a whole, there's nothing to worry about here, you're not talking about the budget of the specific school to which you are a governor, okay?
Very, thank you. So we, just to remind councillors, we're now debating the amended motion put forward by councillor Dimitri and I've got councillor Howarth next.
Chairman, I'm not going to debate that a moment. My members here have been signalling to you to come in before we went to the Labour motion of the amendment of the budget and I still feel I need a proper answer to my question at the start. Councillor Murphy has part of it there. We're not clearing out on the back here, reference to, are we coming back in February to actually rubber stamp all this or is the final proposals today? Because there was mention of coming back in February there, so today is the final proposals for the budget mandates, is that correct?
Yes, the chief executive says this is it today. As regards people putting their hands up, I can show the chief executive, I've got councillor Batruni followed by councillor Debbie Brigbra in my list. So unfortunately, the amended motion has been put forward, we will now debate that and then we'll go back to the results.
So Chairman, sorry to just interrupt for another couple of seconds. So due process, as far as we're concerned, has not been carried out and I'd like an explanation why it has not been carried out, reference to the dates and the diaries and members of the public being misled that they had time to bring the budget proposals to the February meeting.
Right, I've got the chief executive who can clarify.
Well, I'll just say one bit and then you can pick up if you like, thank you Chair. There's, as I said earlier, there's been plenty of notice given of this and I stated the reasons why. There is a reason why the council will be asked to confirm the council tax rate on the twenty sixth of February and that is because town and community councils have got to have the opportunity of submitting all of their precepts. Some of those aren't in yet, it's all got to be worked up. The police precept has to be announced and we have to present council with all those figures and those figures won't be available until the twenty sixth of February meeting. So that's why there are two meetings, one to discuss the budget and one to confirm the council tax proposals. I don't know whether the chief executive wants to add to that.
I'll just limit my input to the point of due process and be very specific and very short. I am comfortable that due process has been followed, the agenda for this meeting, the calling notice has been issued appropriately, the content, the subject of this debate is recorded on that calling notice appropriately. At its last meeting of Cabinet, Cabinet were very, very clear that they would be making their recommendations to full council today. And I guess I would endorse the comments that councillor Murphy has made, that in my presence over any number of events and occasions over the period of the last six to eight weeks, it's been made very clear that there would be a full budget debate, the budget debate on the afternoon of this date. So in terms of due process, I'm satisfied.
Chairman, may I see some minutes of where we have put that date in? Because the last meeting I saw was the Cabinet meeting of January the seventh, it was quite clear then, I did speak actually, the process.
Okay councillor, I've got the leader here who wants to issue a point of clarification.
Thank you Chairman, the beauty of having an iPad and storing everything, I have the Cabinet meeting of November the fifth here, which is the one which describes the whole process and here I'm going to quote from three point two nine next steps. Next step says, "The aim this year has been to establish the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen budget proposals and make progress earlier than in previous years so that slippage can be reduced and the next three years of the medium term financial plan can also be worked on. Hence, this budget report is a month earlier than last year. To that end, it is proposed that the consultation timetable is also brought forward. The consultation will end on the fourteenth of January two thousand and fifteen to enable council to consider the responses and approve final budget proposals on twenty second of January. Formal council tax will still take place at full council on twenty sixth of February fifteen, once the police precept and all of the community council precepts have been notified." That's the actual thing we moved in Cabinet on the fifth of November, three point two nine Chairman.
I think that's quite clear councillor, and I do want to get on to the debate of the budget today. If it's pertaining to that particular point and you've got a reason to raise the point, I want to go into the budget debate. So councillor Watts, you raised your hand, is it about that point?
Thank you, thank you Chair. It's only that, I guess what I'm slightly concerned about is this is a little bit early compared to what the normal practice. And if, maybe I'm just stating the obvious now, I'm sure there's a valid answer to this, but if we're relying on community councils, which has been the kind of backdrop of this to set their budget and we haven't had the sums back yet, how can we then set a budget on the assumption, the assumption that they're going to spend now?
No, no, okay, I take your comment councillor and...
What I'm trying to say is if we're relying on funding from them, so for example, museum service or whatever, and we haven't had the figures in place, how can we make that...
Well hopefully they'll be watching this broadcast today. Councillor Debbie Brigbra, if it's on that particular point of reference.
It's on the process, I feel really strongly about this process. I just think, you know, I've got a few examples of where the process has fallen short of the democratic process. First of all, the Cabinet on the seventh of January agreed and accepted the budget mandates. Now, they put their stamp of approval on the budget mandates during consultation. The last consultation was on the fifteenth of January. So, you know, there's a sense that they didn't wait to listen and collect information from residents to inform their final decision, so I'm really concerned on that. It just feels like a Cabinet budget, it was a done deal. The mandates quite rightly came to the four committees for scrutiny to risk assess. On the tenth of December, I'm a member of the children, young people scrutiny and we looked at mandate thirty five, which is the transmission of children's services, otherwise known as an additional learning need cut. We discussed it and we were not happy with the detail. We said there wasn't enough meat on the bones and we couldn't accept it and we sent it back for further information, further work to come back to us. Now then I find that these minutes have gone to Cabinet and Cabinet have taken these minutes and it didn't come back to us to see if it was a true account, because if it had come to us, we would have said there's been an error there, because the minutes read that the committee resolved to approve the mandate. We did not resolve to approve that mandate because it was unsatisfactory. And then moving a significant meeting of the year forward a month, actually giving very little notice. Now that means less time for residents to voice their concerns, it means less time for members to investigate alternative options, which I was working on, still not getting information. Councillor Frances, councillor Taylor, she couldn't get all the information together to put some options forward. And anyone who wanted to make a presentation at the budget meeting, because I knew of a group who wanted to do a little video to present, they can't do that now and it's because they thought the meeting was going to be in February. Now, I think, can I just, because it's understandable that people are feeling a bit disillusioned with the democratic system, because I think they do feel, what is the point, we're not getting listened to? The democratic process, the constitution, the diary of dates are there to ensure that we are open and transparent and a council that does not abide by its own rules and processes, I just believe is extremely dangerous. And, you know, you could be accused of running a dictatorship.
Okay councillor, I think you've made your point right. Now, as Chairman, I've taken advice from the chief executive who's totally happy with due process. I've listened to the minutes of the meetings of the Cabinet etcetera on due process. I'm satisfied that we're here today to debate the budget and I want us to go on and debate the budget. And if you've got things to add to it or detract from it, today is the day and let us do it. So I'm now going to move on, I've had a plethora of hands going up for various different points and I would like to start with a fresh card here, because I didn't know whether it was for the item or whether the debate itself. So we're starting from scratch, I've got no hands up. If you wish to speak against the motion or for the motion of Dimitri, please put your hand up, I'll list you. So I've got councillor Farley, I've got councillor Watts, I've got councillor Jones, councillor Hobson, for starters councillor Harris, councillor Brigbra, okay councillor Powell, I think that'll get us started and we carry on from there. So I go to the top of the list councillor Farley.
Thank you Chairman. Notwithstanding the pressure on the date, some of us are ready and I would like to speak in support of part of councillor Batruni's motion. I'm not speaking in support of part of it because I don't support all of it, but I want to highlight a part of it. I particularly would like to highlight the proposal that councillor Batruni has made to restore five hundred thousand pounds to the education budget. The reason for this is various. The first is, this clearly is a crucial service for this county. Secondly, a standstill budget is actually a cut budget and the reality is that this amendment would give a little extra resource to our schools. And why should we want to do that? We want to do that because we actually have faith in our governing bodies, but we don't particularly wish to see our governing bodies' hands tied. It's all very well to say governing bodies set the school budgets, they've got to make everything work, if we are tying their hands with the amount of money we give them, we're actually not treating them fairly. It would not surprise me if before too long, we start seeing numbers of school governors resigning. After all, why should you as a volunteer go into a setup where you have to make somebody else's cuts? So, in supporting councillor Batruni, I would emphasise the support that I would like us to give to the five hundred thousand pound reinstatement for the education budget. It is modest, but it is affordable and we believe it is achievable.
Thank you councillor, councillor Harman Watts.
Likewise Chair, I mean Peter stole some of my thunder, really this is effectively a cut and simply to blame it on governors is completely unacceptable. What you have to remember, many of us are governors, or sorry, I'm not a governor, but many of you are governors, is essentially that you, basically, you have to make very, very difficult decisions and you're constrained by obviously the purse of the local authority. Passing the buck, passing the buck, that's what this Conservative administration is, on volunteers that come forward in their own spare time over late of a night and you're expecting them to put, you know, huge pressure on existing services within the school, I think is completely unacceptable. Now, I remember this time last year and possibly the year before that, they talked about essentially ring fences, protecting education. Education would not be affected, but in real terms Chair, the cuts, effectively this budget is almost a cut. is almost a cut. You've got, you've got ongoing costs, you've got, obviously, staff increases and stuff like that, and we're at breaking point. Bob Greenland said himself, just the other week, you can't cut anymore. And what are they doing? They're cutting into education. Most essential, I would argue, next to social services, one of the most essential services that we provide. Yeah? I simply don't understand what their tactic is when you think that we're still in special measures, and, you know, the world is still focused on Monmashe and where it goes forward from this. And yet, what we're doing, we're cutting off the blood supply to the heart. I'm absolutely appalled by it, so I'm happy to support Dimitri's proposal. And frankly, it's all right for Peter to laugh. Yeah, he said he was taking this up last year, he was going to take a hold of it, and what has he done? He's cut it. Yeah? Yeah, you said you were taking up some of the responsibility with education, and he sat there laughing about it. No, I'm sure people on TV can't see it, but he should be ashamed of himself.
Councillor, address the Chair, please.
So I am, I am, Chair, through you, he should be ashamed of himself.
Mr. Chairman, I absolutely am disgusted that councillor Watts is slaying my character in this chamber today. That is absolutely wrong. I'm not laughing at anything, I'm not smiling at anything. This is an extremely serious situation. I will speak in turn, and I will clarify exactly our position on this.
Right councillor, just please steer away from personal accusations in any way, in that sense, okay? I'll go on to councillor Brian Jones.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of short comments on Dimitri's opening remarks on street lighting. You were wise to say there was anecdotal evidence of an increase in crime and disorder as a result of switching off lights at night. Because anecdotal is all it is. We have responded, for example, to requests in Monmouth from the police to switch lights back on, although the reality is that all those burglaries seem to have been taking place during the day or in the early evening. That we switched them off because, switched them back on again, rather, because we were asked to. What we've got to always remember is, these lights do not go off until midnight. So, you know, the number of middle-of-the-night burglaries are very, very remote. You know, there's one or two other things in here. You mentioned the advertising on council vehicles, and you compare it with Devon, which is probably the biggest county geographically in the whole of the UK, barring perhaps one or two places.
A point of personal explanation, sorry, it's a council within Devon, not the whole of Devon.
Ah, right, okay. But regardless of that, I don't, I think we've looked at this as an organisation before and discovered, I think, that we cannot sort of raise large sums of money by putting advertising on vehicles, particularly as our numbers of vehicles are diminishing as we speak. So, really, all I want to say is that, you know, there is no evidence at all. I know you've got pressure from some of your backbenchers who are diametrically opposed to switching lights out. I understand their view. But, you know, the other thing I would like to mention as well is, of course, that by not switching lights off, we're increasing greatly to pollution.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Phil Hobson.
Thank you, Leader. Just well to echo on this. I mean, I'm very interested, because the team have been working hard on monetising or introducing advertising on our website, which is our most valuable portal, if you like, to increase revenue. On the fleet, I mean, I've got several questions, really, or concerns, which is, we may be comparing apples and oranges. For example, I do require a very thorough evidential base in front of me to actually agree to any amendment, which I don't have. But just to go through it, Devon is huge. Now I'm hearing that it's a council within Devon. Our fleet is smaller. Have we actually had those figures verified from our own fleet people in transport to actually give us a gauge or an idea that we can actually raise revenues that have been suggested today? Was the revenue raising exercised by the council in Devon via a PR agency, or was it in-house? Because we do not have the capacity with our own communications team to actually run our own, if you like, advertising PR agency. So you'd have to take into account some hefty commission rates from an outside company to do that for us. We are looking at all sorts of roadside and roundabout sponsorship. We're looking at all sorts of sponsorship in regards to public spaces. But yet, those figures have not come through. I mean, what I would say to councillor Dimitri Betroney is today, we'd be very, very interested to see what the evidence that you've got and the figures that you've got, so we can work with you to actually achieve the savings that you've done. Unfortunately, I haven't seen the evidential base today, I can't support that amendment. There was some, you might have to correct me on this, but you were talking about an investment fund of such. And to achieve those rates, basically, we're talking in line of, if you like, a Monmashe sovereign investment fund. Now, these are usually equity-based, and that means that they are high-risk, but the potential returns are lucrative, but they're open to extreme volatility on the open market. Now, in year one, year two, or year three, you might make some good returns. But what do you do when you've made a loss of 20 or 30%, which is not unusual in sovereign investment funds? How do we turn around to the people of Monmashe and say, oh, by the way, we lost 30% last year? There is no income viable or available in that particular year. So what that means is, there's no guarantee of a sustainable year-to-year income. Now, we do have a Treasury team, expert as it is, and talented, and they do actually work the markets on a day-to-day basis, trying to get the best value from investments, but also getting the best value on interest rates to reduce our debt interest repayments. So, again, what I would say is, we haven't had the evidential base today. If there are proposals for that sort of investment fund, I think that the Treasury team should have a look at it and report back, but it's going to be next year's budget.
You're the proposer of the amendment councillor, is it a point of clarity?
It's just a point of clarity. Officers have looked at it, and I will be sending him the information now.
Okay, thank you. And now go to councillor Roger Harris.
Thank you, Chair. Just to support our leader on his putting back into the budget the £120,000 on additional learning needs. Now, it might be presented in the documentation as efficiency savings or what else, but there is no doubt about it that it's a cut of £120,000 in the budget. Our budget will restore that £120,000. And in the, in the scheme of things, if the original cutting out £120,000 was saving money and efficiency, the additional, adding it back must make the service even more effective. And I cannot believe that we are, as a council, contemplating cutting money from a part of our budget with such vulnerable people and young children at that. So, as I say, supporting Dimitri wholeheartedly on that £120,000 staying in and being spent on additional educational needs.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Debbie Blakber.
Thanks, Chair. First of all, I would like to support councillor Betroney on safeguarding the additional learning needs and the school budgets. We talk about flatlining. It gives a sense we're not touching the school budget, but actually, in real terms, we are. School budgets are being reduced by 1.63%, and their costs have increased by 3.9%. So in real terms, it's near 5% reduction. Now, what does that look like in a school budget? Well, in one of the larger schools, that's £357,000 shortfall. That's not flatlining. What does this mean? Well, it looks as if they're going to have to put a plan together as how they're going to lose staff, because that's the only thing that they have got to lose to make savings on. Obviously, that's going to have an impact on the young people and their opportunities in education. It's predicted that more schools will be in deficit as a result of this. We've had fantastic progress with our results, and I think we're all proud of that. And now you're going to pull the plug. I just believe that with the schools, we have to keep supporting them. Add on to that, the additional learning needs budget of savings of £120,000 this year, but over two years, £700,000. And I want to know, what does that look like? Where are these savings coming from? Are we losing teachers? When we were at the meeting, we didn't have any concrete information to tell me the sources of those savings. So I don't know if it's staffing, is it that we're going to be being pressurised to educate them in county, but without the resources. As I say, there's a lot of, well, there's just not enough meat on the bone to kind of make this decision. Now, the strategy, as councillor Betroney is saying, is a brilliant strategy. But as I read it, I read it as the responsibility and the workload of supporting those young people with additional learning needs will be put onto the school. So there is an element of, you're already cutting their budget, and you're now going to give them a higher workload. And for me, I just believe that the local authority is saying, look, we're saving this money, but we're shoving it all onto the schools to do. I cannot sign, because it is like signing an open cheque, I don't know what the risks are, because I don't know what is going, what are we losing. So for those reasons, I would absolutely support that these two budgets stay in place.
Thank you councillor. I've got councillor Powell and councillor Fox.
Thank you, Chairman. Sorry, excuse me. Actually, councillor Brian Jones touched on the subject I was going to speak on, but there are two points I'd just like to add to it. One is that if there's any, this is about the lights being turned off. If there are any vulnerable places, like dark alleys or steps, or slightly dangerous junctions, the lights have been left on. And if any councillor has somewhere in his ward that he still feels is vulnerable, if he approaches the relevant officer, that can be looked into. The other thing is, a few months ago, we had a police seminar here, and the chief officer here was asked, has it made any difference to the crime? Has the crime gone up at night because the lights have been turned off? And he said, no. Now, all the chats about people gossiping about crime going up, and nothing to take a notice of, but he knows, it's his job, and he knows the figures. So I think that we're rather getting a bit panicky about these things. And after all, it is 12 o'clock at night. Usually, most people are in their own houses by then. If they choose to go out at night, they're younger people who are quite able to cope with it.
Councillor Peter Fox.
Thank you, Chairman. I reflect on the amendments, but before I do, I just want to obviously, while I'm on my feet, say a few overarching words as well. Firstly, I want to thank councillor Phil Murphy, once again, for his open and honest delivery of our budget proposals, and to thank him for the huge commitment he has put in, once again, to bring this budget forward. He's been talking to our citizens for many, many weeks now, helping as many people of Monmashe as possible to understand the difficult position we face and what we plan to do about it. So thank you, Phil, for all of your efforts on that. Can I also thank Joy and her team for pulling all of this together, and thank all of the staff who have been absolutely brilliant through all of this process, and gone beyond the call of duty, helping out at all of our engagement events, giving of their own time. And we do thank them for that commitment. Thanks also to the many, many members of public who have got involved to date. Their help has been invaluable in helping us to move forward to where we are. Thank you also to the select committees and all other stakeholder groups, and there are lots of them, for their input into helping us form this budget. We really appreciated your constructive and your thoughtful inputs. Mr. Chairman, I must reiterate councillor Murphy's earlier points when he opened up the debate, where he reminded us that we are, once again, the lowest-funded county in Wales. We get the least amount of money by far per resident. Indeed, we get 20% less funding than the average Welsh council, and less than two-thirds of the funding that one of our own neighbouring authorities get. However, even though we are the lowest-funded council and have had to bear another 4.3% cut levelled on us by the Labour Welsh Government, we are adamant that we will continue to provide a solid per-public service offer. Unlike most Labour-run councils, this council will be keeping our libraries open. We will be keeping our leisure centres open. We will be keeping our youth services operating. We will be keeping community learning. We will still have our museums and cultural offer. These are tough times, though, and things will get tougher, as Welsh Government direct more money from local government to their own priorities. But even in this very difficult time, we will be protecting school budgets from the level of pressure faced by other services by keeping them at the same cash levels as last year, in line with pupil numbers, albeit, we will require them to meet the cost of paying inflation. And it's worth noting at this point, in relation to the amendment, that education spend in Monmashe is well above the Welsh average. Sorry, Chairman, will you?
Yeah, I just need to bring you into the fact we're debating the amendment as predenses the alternative package.
Yeah, I will be debating the amendment. This is some general views, Chairman, about the budget.
Because we will have another opportunity in the substantial motion to debate.
Well, I hope so, Miss Chairman. So you instructed me to move to the debate around the amendment completely. Well, okay. Okay, well, I'm still, we will be increasing money to children's services by £900,000 to meet their growing need. We will continue to enable people in need of care to stay in their homes and communities longer, finding individual solutions. But all right, I'll draw to the key issues that councillor Betroney has made. We've heard about the lights. Okay, I was concerned around this, as many others were. I took it on myself to speak with the chief police, the police commissioner and his chief executive, raised it on that meeting, to ask if they'd had any feedback at that time. They hadn't had any negative feedback. As councillor Powell described, we had our chief constable joining us in this chamber for a meeting only a couple of weeks ago. And I asked that point in front of many of you members here, have there been, has there been an issue? And he said, no, there hasn't. So that side isn't, that area isn't really as a concern as much as you've put it over. What I'm deeply concerned about is the fact that, actually, I applaud Dimitri for bringing forward an amended budget, but I don't, I cannot support the fact that he's bringing it forward today. It is many, many months I asked you to come forward with things for us to consider, to us to work together, for us to look at, to consult on. The trouble is, the people of Monmashe are not having an opportunity to understand the depth of what you're saying. There may be some merit in some of the things you put forward. And in light of that, I mean, I am expecting that we will want to take some of your views and explore them out further, and do the necessary work on them to help understand if they are feasible or not, so that they can actually feature meaningfully in our future debates over the budgets in the coming years, recognising there's over £10 million further to find. ALN is a difficult, difficult subject. We recognise there's a lot of people have been talking around the ALN. We need very clearly to understand how we spend our money and make sure that the money we spend is going to do the very best for the people it's targeted at. Sometimes, the way we do things in all councils may not be the best way. It may be that it needs to change, and we have to look hard at how we utilise our monies in that regard. We will be taking some fundamental looks at how we provide our ALN provision over in the future, to make sure that we give the very best service to those individual pupils and children who need that support, and making sure we make the best efficient use of the money that we are, we have in our control. And we will do that, we have to do that. It is simplistic in many ways to put forward some of these things, a headline grabbing, you know, £500,000 from consultancy. I will ask the leadership of the opposition to help us understand what areas he believes we need to cut away from the consultancy spend, because it's not all about consultants, as I know councillor Greenland will explain. What services does he believe we should no longer support to address that part of his amendments? So we'd need a deeper understanding. When you bring these things to us on the table in the last minute of setting the budget, how can you expect us to genuinely grab these without having a deep understanding of what you are actually proposing and what the implications are? So, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to stop there, because I note what you said, that I can come back in on the substantive debate when we move to that point. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, now go to councillor Frances Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. I do very much support some of councillor Betroney's sentiments, but I'm going to draw you to a couple of points that councillor Fox made and that councillor Murphy made. And then I'm going to speak about specifically the additional learning needs element of the amended motion. So councillor Murphy said to us that the reason that this had been brought forward was so that there was still time to do work on proposals prior to the February where a precept- precept-setting meeting. Yep, he said that, it'll be live-streamed and recorded, and that's what I understood. So forgive me if I have that wrong. However, I would say that in the papers for this meeting, which were sent out on the 15th of January, and which are dated the 14th of January, it says under 3.13, under new savings, even with final adjustments, a significant gap of £440,000 remains, while every effort to find further savings has been made. Making proposals that could be implemented for 21516 at this stage is not considered practicable. So I just want to draw that to everybody's attention. And I also want to draw attention to the fact that we were told that the budget, the consultation closed on the 14th of January. I understand that, and interestingly, there was a consultation meeting held here on the 14th, the same day, I would add, members, that that notice of this meeting is made. So I'm interested to know that the good people who came here on the 14th of January, the Access For All forum and some of the representatives of vulnerable groups, how the views that they expressed was going to be fed in to this process. I'm really interested to know if we brought them here and wasted their time. I would also draw your attention to the fact that, and this is very much related to the additional learning needs proposals, that during that debate on the 14th, the leader, and I'm quoting him verbatim, says, "Some of our mandates haven't been as clear as you would have liked, and I'm not qualified particularly to give you the absolute detail about some of this." So I'm interested that he's not qualified, the cabinet member, the leader of the council, to give detail to members of the public on our budget mandates. And he's also questioning how if we bring things forward today, we can engage with members of the public on those. I think that's an important point. I'll go on. It says, so he's not qualified to give us the absolute detail. He says, "About £120,000 of the ALN savings is about doing something different for a number of families in North Abigavenny, around Derry View, as I understand it. And the efficiencies of changing that service are being realised, but those individual needs will be met." Okay? And then there's a little break, and he goes on to say, "But I'm conscious that the mandate does not give the depth and the explanation you need to meaningfully contribute, as you wished, which I can apologise for and we need to do something about." So this is on the 14th of January. We've heard that there was lots of time for those mandates to be improved, changed, and be very clear about them. So I have two very clear points, Chair. First of all, is this a robust process in developing the budget? My view is that it is not, because we are not taking into account people's views. We are not presenting the public with clear mandates. We are not meeting our duties under the gunning principles of meaningful consultation. Because as the leader of this council has acknowledged, it is not clear. The scrutiny committees didn't know where the savings were coming from, and so how are the public meant to know? And how are they meant to meaningfully engage? I would, I myself was intending to bring forward a budget proposal for the 14th. I couldn't do it for the 14th, but I thought, I'll do it for the 15th, because my son was actually ill on the 14th, so I didn't get an opportunity to finish what I was doing. On the 15th, I received my papers, and it quite clearly said, as I read out to you, and I apologise for boring you, Chair, but I do think it's important, that it is not practicable for any further proposals to be implemented. So I asked myself, have I wasted my time? Quite possibly, yes. I think that's disappointing. And I asked myself, more importantly, have members of the public at all wasted their time? And that is much more important. I'm going to just come on to asking the cabinet member for explanation then, because I do think that the executive member for education in particular needs to outline for all members, and more importantly, the public, what the clear direction of travel is around additional learning needs. And furthermore, can she explain to us why she allowed an entirely opaque budget mandate to go out for public consultation? Are we to assume either that she does not understand it herself, or that she does not wish the public to understand it? Thank you.
Right, councillor, we were debating the amendment as proposed. You've challenged the integrity, I feel, of the process, and I will give leave to the leader to bring a point of clarity on that process to you from what you've said.
Thank you, chairman. I don't bet I'll cover everything that Frances picked up. I am disappointed that only now she's making the noise about the budget. We have seen very little of her. I have not had her come to my door once and ask to talk to me about any element, including ALN, which is disappointing, absolutely frustrating, when we're here today at such an important occasion, that now you start reeling off this stuff. I quoted a budget report which came to Cabinet 5th of November. 5th of November, bonfire night, can't be forgotten, and where you all could have come and started getting engaged, not one of you did, and I'm sorry about that. Now, to point out the clarity which you obviously picked up from the YouTube clip, which I'm pleased you did, there was a member of the public at that forum who was expressing some concern that he was speaking on behalf of parents who didn't quite understand the depth of what we were saying. And I recognise that, and there's nothing wrong with saying, you recognise that perhaps the ALN mandate wasn't as clear as perhaps it ought to have been. And I accepted that, because I can see that whilst it says a lot, and if you understand, if you read what's there, it gives you a very clear indication, it perhaps didn't give the depth of detail that was needed. And I've recognised that, and there's nothing wrong with coming out and saying that. And I know that that depth of clarity can be provided if so wished today, I'm sure. We have the chief education officer and the cabinet member. So I was being honest and hopeful. And when you say, when I said that I hadn't got the expertise to answer, I am not an educationalist. It's wrong that somebody like myself could, would try to actually put the finite detail around something which had to be delivered by a professional officer whose expertise were in that field. And that's why I said it in such a way. What I am pleased about is that you have taken time to get engaged and took some time to watch that process. I thank you for that.
Right, I go to councillor Kevin Williams.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry.
Can I make a point of personal explanation?
If it's a quick one, councillor. Point of explanation.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Fox asked why I haven't been advised him of my engagement prior. I've spoken to a number of people, including councillor Greenland, about my, you know, what I was doing, what I was planning to do. I've spoken to a number of officers. I've made no secret of it. I've supported the engagement process, and I think it's, you know, but I am not a full-time cabinet member. I'm not here all the time. I have a job, I have a family, I have a life. I've put in the work because I thought it was important. But, you know, I don't think it's for councillor Fox to rail against me. The fundamental issue is, even if I had the best budget proposal in the world, the papers quite clearly say that it would make no difference.
There was that issue there now, and I've got councillor Kevin Williams. Councillor Kevin.
Thank you, Chair. Very quickly, deal with a couple of points. The first one councillor Jones referred to was pollution. He obviously doesn't share the views of his MP, who I quote says, worrying and wasting taxpayers' money on something that probably doesn't even exist. So you obviously don't share David Davis's view on pollution and global warming, but no. I would suggest all those caravans going into your park probably create more pollution than the streetlights ever would, but however.
Please keep to the point, councillor.
It was meant as a joke. Anecdotal evidence, well, I've got evidence written in front of me here, which, believe me, isn't anecdotal. It's from a group of people called the Mammoth New Business Group, who I've sort of got involved with. There's 360 people have signed a petition, double the amount that turned out the Mammothshire engages, by the way, talking about street lighting. They've signed a petition, and they've commented as well, many of these things talk about people feeling unsafe, the darkness outside. I had the misfortune to be on a half a Drenish Road, which admittedly isn't in Mammothshire, where a guy lost his life over the New Year period because a car didn't see him. Pitch black, absolutely deadly and dangerous. I really do hope that doesn't happen in Mammothshire, for the sake of anybody who's on the roads at night. It's not people, as councillor Powell suggests, are kids that are off out on a jolly and, you know, can look after themselves with their torch. I think, I think to be honest with you, it was probably people who were actually working for a living and having to come home after midnight, whether they be working in a pub, working in a care home, or like my daughter, works in a shopping cumbrian and regularly travels home at half past 12 at night, down into our estate, which is dark, there's no doubt about it. And she's commented that if somebody stepped out on the road in front of her, sometimes she'd find it difficult to see, with rain, fog, whatever. The evidence isn't anecdotal, it's, you know, it's here. There's quotes like, "Very unsafe for people to walk." Our teenage daughter wants to go out, and I won't let her go because I'm afraid of her walking home in the dark. Our village needs lighting, the chapel was broken into, that was actually in my ward, where the chapel was broken into over the Christmas period. Nobody saw anything, because it's pitch black, you've got to jump to see the chapel, there wouldn't anybody be walking around the graveyard at that time of night. I believe that this is quite a big issue for many, many people. I've talked to many people across Mammothshire, I'm not just talking about my ward, I've spoken to people from Llanelle, out to Grosmont, Mammoth, and the intermediate areas. To me, it's very important. It's one of the things which I think are sacred as a service that we provide to the public. It's one of the things which, it's not overly expensive, yeah? We've given ideas of where we can pay for it to be turned back on. It obviously met with, you know, the usual nonsense of the division, I would expect, that we're not going to get it done. If that's the case, and you don't want to turn them all back on, sit down with me, let's talk about a different way of doing it. We're always trumpeting how we do things differently in Mammothshire, let's have a discussion on it, a sensible discussion. I'm quite happy to do it, with the leader, the finance minister, or whatever he is. Brian, I'm quite happy to sit with all of you, have a chat about it, and see if we can do it. It's all, you know, sorry, Peter, I said something funny again. I'm quite happy to sit down and talk to you about it, have a discussion, and see where we go. If it's going to get kicked out, it's going to get kicked out, but I won't be sort of put down for the want to try in. That's basically all I've got to say, and, you know, I hope you'll give it some thought. As Peter knows from my time at Darrenvelling, if I think something and believe in it, I'll continue. Yeah, I won't shut up. I may be wrong, I don't know, but I will continue to discuss it. And I know you spoke to the police here and asked them, had they had any reports, and they said no. However, confidence in police crime figures at the moment in Gwent are probably a little bit dodgy, to say the least, because we've only just started to actually report them correctly. And one final word on it, I was actually given the displeasure of somebody in my garden two weeks before Christmas, at three o'clock in the morning. And this is an anecdote, it's true. I was lucky that I got a seven-stone German shepherd who made them leave in the way they came rather quickly. If I'd been an old ear, sat on the edge of my bed, hearing somebody jump my back gate, I think that would have scared me. If it had been my mother, I too would have been upset. Please give it some thought, that's all I'm asking.
Thank you, councillor. I now go to councillor Tony Easton. I now go to councillor Bob Greenland.
Thank you, chairman. First of all, I can confirm that councillor Frances Taylor did speak to me about a budget issue. But I am extremely surprised to hear her say that there is no meaningful engagement, there has been no meaningful engagement. I don't really know how else we could have done it. We have been out on numerous occasions to communities around the area. We've had road shows, we've had bits on Twitter, we've done everything that we possibly can to engage with as many people as possible. But however much we did it, there will still be some people who haven't engaged, and that is a fact of life. But we have done everything we can. Now, within the Labour proposals, there are some things that we'd like to do. I think we could all think of more things we'd like to do. But as they have said, it's what's affordable. But what is affordable has to be based on solid budget proposals that can be delivered. They cannot be built on aspirations. And when you read the list here, they are exactly that, aspirations. Let's take, for instance, the leisure membership bolt-on. Now, if you read your mandates, mandate one will tell you that in, within leisure services, we are intent on maximising our income, and a saving there of £520,000 is included in this budget. We believe that we have gone as far as we can without being reckless in our estimates of what can be saved. We do intend that we will work harder and more to make sure that this moves to a leisure service which is cost neutral. But we can't get there in one go. We are doing a huge lump already this year, and we will be looking at marketing, better marketing, this year. But we cannot, with our hands on our hearts, say we can deliver any more than, quite honestly, the huge sum that we have already put in for £520,000. So frankly, I believe that that extra £20,000 is a step too far, and it is undeliverable. Now, I want to turn to consultancy fees, because that is where Labour believes they are going to save the most money. And you will remember, of course, we had advance warning of this through press releases, the headline of which, 5.8 million on consultancy fees. Now councillor Petroni has already accepted that the vast majority of that money cannot be lumped out, it's capital costs. It has nothing to do with our revenue and saving revenue amounts. So what he's actually saying is that we will look at the spend of 1.7 million, and we will save 500 million, subject, subject, subject to other proposals being looked at and agreed by the leader as urgent. But he is not saying that in his mandate, he is saying, we will make 500,000 in savings. Otherwise, his mandate doesn't stack up. So that's what he's saying, we're going to make 500,000 savings. So what is in this 1.7 million that he says he's going to save? 1.7 million total that he wants to make 500, sorry about that, that he wants to make 500,000 pounds worth of saving. What's in it? Well, there's children's advocacy services relating to fostering emplacements, there's legal fees on fixed asset sales, legal fees on the borough theatre transfer and the like. There's interim costs on King Henry until the new head starts. There's LDP inquiry and inspection charges, there's road safety costs of 88,000, there's insurance, risk management. Those alone reach his cap of 1.2 million. And I don't think any of us would suggest that any of those costs would be delayed or completely gone. So what's the things that he is therefore saying that he wouldn't be doing? Housing homelessness costs, leisure advice that have actually led to bringing down the costs dramatically in our leisure services, public health and trading standards costs, highway costs, complaints investigations, and the list goes on. And if his proposal of a saving of 500,000 stands up, he will not be doing those things. In other words, chairman, it is nothing but aspiration and hot air. And if he is basing his budget proposals on hot air, then we cannot reach those aspirational pieces that he's put in there. Chairman, it is, I'm afraid, another example of Labour being quite out of touch. We've had three years now of budgets. In the first year, their big idea was that they would not invest on innovation. 200,000 pounds, which gave us savings of over 2 million. And I'm really glad to see that this week, just two days ago, the Minister for Public Finance has recognised the importance of innovation. The Welsh Government is now going to work with Nesta. We've heard Nesta before, you remember that? Three years ago, we were working with Nesta. And what are they going to do? They're going to work with Nesta on a Welsh innovation lab. Perhaps councillor Watts would like to go down and come and report back to us on what he thinks of that one. Last year, we had a, we had a budget proposal from Last year, we had a budget proposal from Labour that they would save money on bringing in council tax quicker. You can only bring in council tax once and once you've brought it in, you can't go back and ask for it. The idea that they were going to save huge amounts of money and therefore do it is rubbish.
One moment councillor, yes.
Point of clarification, we would say we would be honest with the public and increase the collection rate, not bring it in quicker.
Continue councillor.
Then if that's the case, he ought to look to see that we have one of the highest collection rates in Wales, even higher than Denbysia. So again, I'm afraid it falls down on all of that. So I cannot accept that the aspirational ideas of bringing in additional money are any more than that, they could not be part of proper budget proposals.
Thank you councillor. By the way councillor, if you find that you're speaking and you're not displayed on the screen and your red button is on, press the button twice to take it off you, to come back on to you and you will then come on the screen, yeah, just for, because otherwise they're seeing me while you're talking. Okay, that's all right, thank you. Right, next I got councillor Sarah Jones.
Thank you chairman. I just had a couple of questions over the deliverability of the income generation ideas. The first one being around the advertising revenue. You're talking about one district council, I believe, I think it's Torridge District Council. If it's that successful and has been that successful, how come this hasn't been rolled out across all councils in England and Wales? What would be the cost from employing an advertising agency to try and generate this income? And how would you get around a possible exclusion list, for example? So would you be happy to advertise anything? And if that's not the case, how would we separate or segregate certain issues? Particularly in light of further legislation coming forward, for example, the public health bill, there'd be impact there maybe over alcohol advertising, but how would we segregate that? Potentially this would create more headaches than the amount of money we could generate from that proposal. But I do believe it is a laudable aim and it's something that potentially we could look at, which I'm sure the council is looking at already for the future. And the second question was really around the leisure bolt-on. You'll know that the leisure team has done a fantastic job in putting together the mandate with a potential of £155,000 of income generation in the current proposals, which I think is a great aspiration and something that's certainly achievable. What amount of additional revenue do you think we could create from the leisure bolt-on? And do you really think we can achieve that over and above the £155,000 that we're already aiming to achieve?
Right, thank you councillor. We are debating the amendment, it's a debate, not a question and answer session in that sense. I've got no more names on my list, is anybody else who wants to contribute to this? Otherwise, I will come back to the mover of the substantial motion, who has the right to sum up for the amendment, right? That's the way the rules work. So is there anybody else who wants to talk on the amendment, please? No? In that case, I call the mover of the original motion to sum up.
Okay, thank you chairman. Actually, what I was going to do, perhaps I'll do both together, was look at one particular aspect of councillor Petruany's ideas. I'll just touch on a couple of things. If anybody has got any usable ideas, and I'll come on to councillor Petruany's in a minute, including councillor Frances Taylor, I'd be very pleased to see them. As I said at the beginning, we still have 10 million pounds to find and even if we can't do it this year, we'll do it next. The idea of the time that I spoke about was the time to allow officers to implement the work on the proposals, that's what that was about. And specifically about access for all forum. They raised questions, all of which were answered but didn't bring any points forward. But what I wanted to particularly talk about was the proposal to transfer the million pounds with regards to investments in property portfolios and that sort of thing. And like most of the ideas put forward by the Labour group, there's a germ of a good idea in all of those. And I give councillor Petruany my assurance that when we're looking at the medium term financial plan in particular, we will try and incorporate them. But I need to discuss the matter of this investment. If we were going to do that, it would mean altering the annual treasury management plan and we won't be looking at that again until March. But having said that, the agents that we use throughout the whole of our asset management activities are well aware that we would look at any investment opportunities that present and some already have. However, none have been deemed suitable for a range of reasons, principally because we don't have long-term monies anymore, all of our investments are short term because of the nature of the borrowing and what we need to be doing with it. And there haven't been a huge amount of opportunities arising in the county, particularly over the last 12 months. We were made aware of a retail property in Monmouth, but agents' advice was that there were unreasonably high expectations around price. We also made aware of another retail site in Monmouth, but no details emerged on additional questions that were being asked. There are opportunities presenting themselves in Chepstow and possibly Caldicott, but although we're trying to progress those, we haven't progressed them far enough yet to be able to say whether they're a goer. So the point I'm making is that if the opportunity presents itself and then have it at the moment, we would actually be adopting that type of scheme. But to enable us to do it, we would have to have a change in our treasury management strategy. As regards the other point, chairman, Bob has answered some of the questions. Liz Hackett-Payne has a lot of information, as I know she wants to give, on the ALN and the education briefs and there may well be an opportunity for her to do that, as I know it's of concern to a great number of members.
Right, the stage we are at now councillor is we debated the amendment and we can vote on the amendment and see what the substantial motion now comes, yeah? All clear? Okay then. So I would like you to indicate all those in favour of the amendment. Are you clear what the amendment is, first of all? Yes, you're all clear of that? I know it was long-winded in the sense that there's a lot of words there, but you're all clear on what they were. So if I ask you then to vote, all those in favour of the amendment as proposed by councillor Petruany. Right, that means the amendment is defeated and therefore we go back to the original substantial motion and we will now debate that. So, right councillor. So I've got a hand up, which is councillor Simon Howarth.
Clarity on mandate 28, chairman, sorry. 28 is the creation of the hubs and the libraries. If we decide to accept the budget today, does that mean that the new library within the capital programme for Abigavenny, does that mean that that library with the cabinet decision is, I won't say null and void, but it goes to a different place and this mandate then is the next step in the creation of the hub in Abigavenny? Because there are two things there. If we agree this mandate, that means then we have two things in Abigavenny, we still have the library and we have the mandate. So I'd just like a little bit of clarity on that, on the direction of that mandate being agreed today, would that squash then the new library in Abigavenny?
Okay, on a point of clarity, I will invite the cabinet member to comment on that.
Okay, may I bring it? Chair? Would you like me to carry on, chairman?
Chair, a point of clarification and also on the same mandate, I would like the cabinet member to address the Caldicott issue as well. This mandate went through, am I allowed to speak? It's to do with the same mandate, the same mandate, the same answer.
If you bring it up in due course, let's get this one out of the way first. The councillors raised the point.
It's the same issue, chair.
Okay, well, I'm sure the councillor will answer. So continue councillor Howarth, have you finished your point?
That is the one point, I'd like to bring an amendment to the budget mandates, budget mandate 41 and budget mandate 14, please.
Well, can we go to the point of clarity first, then I'll come back to you and you may then propose your amendments, okay? So councillor Greenland, would you like to respond to the library issue in the House?
Yeah, certainly chairman. The mandate is to enable us to get on with forming the hubs. In terms of Caldicott, we will be retaining the library in the existing building for the moment, although I know that there are suggestions that it might move, but that is not part of the mandate that we have in front of us. In terms of USC, it is to allow the building works to go on for the amalgamation of services into the one building. In terms of Abigavenny, it is mainly to deal with the, so that we can go ahead and deal with staffing issues. And we will have another report coming to us on the future positioning of the library in Abigavenny. At the moment, we still have as a council decision that we will build a new library. I think that is very much been openly debated and I would anticipate being able to very soon clear up the issues around the sighting of the library in Abigavenny through further reports that we are going to come. But it is not part of this budget mandate.
Right, thank you councillor. I now go back to councillor Howarth and you have some amendments to propose.
Yeah, thank you for that councillor Greenland, that makes it very clear now that what we decide today, the Abigavenny library will still be within the capital programme at the moment. May I move a motion or an amendment, whichever way you would like to put it, on mandate 41 and mandate 14, please, chairman?
Yes, proceed.
I thought you may have asked for a second there.
Well, no, I'll listen to your amendment and then I will ask for a second.
My amendment is that the highways budget, that the cuts are within the document of savings to be made, during our Strong Communities Select Committee, it was unanimous in that meeting, cross-party, that we were not happy with the cuts being made in the provision of the crews which were out there servicing Monmouthshire. And that were the crews who go around, who enable the free flow, enable Monmouthshire residents to get about the place, RTCs within the area, road diversions, clear the gullies, fill the potholes. We did feel that that saving to be made within that mandate was not correct. And I say it's cross-party. Examples are, we've just gone through a winter which is, or we're still in the winter, where we actually need members of staff there. I know we're looking at the grounds people to cover, i.e., it's quite correct, if our waste people cannot operate, they can go out doing the provision out there. But this is a general crew, these are general crews which ride around the countryside assisting members of the public of Monmouthshire in problems which mean a lot to them and this is what it's about, it does mean a lot to them, having a response. It's quite clear in the document saying we will not be able to respond how we respond now. For the sake, I'm led to believe the mandate is about 40,000 pound or 50,000 pound to cut them crews? Now, surely, if we can't respond how we are doing now, what does that say to us as a council of delivering public services which are vitally needed? So if it means we cannot carry out our services to the public, reference to gritting, filling salt bins is the main thing which came up for me this week, is we've been so slow in filling salt bins because we didn't have the manpower to do it. We're going to have even less manpower in this next financial year to carry out that process. I do feel strong about it and the Strong Communities Select felt really strong about this. We did ask the cabinet member to go away and have a look at this. He went away and had a look at it and he has said in the document as reference to the cabinet in January, that yes, he did take our feelings and did think about them, but the decision still stands within the mandate. And that's why, one reason why I cannot accept that mandate.
Okay, can we just deal with one mandate at a time then councillor? So do you have a second for that, please? Councillor Blighborough is a second there. Right, we're now debating the amendment which is to delete mandate 41 generally, is that what you're saying?
Part of mandate 41, chairman. It's split into parts, the Select Committee did review some of that mandate, but it's split into parts and it was the crews it was, the crews which drive around.
So to delete the part of mandate 41 which relates to cutting of crews, is that what you want?
Yes, yes.
Right, and you've got a second for that. We now debate that amendment. So I'm looking for anyone who wishes to contribute to that. Councillor Brian Jones, cabinet member.
Thank you chairman. I need Roger to help me with this one at the end, but I mean basically, it's like all things at the moment, if we're realistic, we know we've got to cut our budgets and there's no easy way of going around this. What I would say is that I think you said 40,000, Simon.
More than that, no, Roger?
Yeah. So I'll just hand over to Roger to clarify the sum of money because it's obviously not correct, as you've said it, Simon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify on that particular aspect of the mandate, it includes, and it's within the 450,000, 100,000 relates to taking away four highways operatives from the overall crews within county and trunk roads overall.
Thank you. Right, any more contributions? Councillor Dimitri Petruany?
Was it over 100,000? None of us want to cut anything, but you've got to say how are you going to pay for it? I could have gone to the leader and just, I could have said, on all the mandates, don't cut this, don't cut that, I don't want half, not even three quarters of the cuts. It's no good, the times we live in, if you want to be serious about it, it's just no good just saying I don't want this. I'll be here all night, I will be here all night, but you've got to say how will you get 100,000 pounds? Otherwise, we're all wasting our time here.
Right, anybody else? Anybody else, councillor Smith?
Yes, only chairman. I regret any cuts to the infrastructure, the highways budgets. Without a decent infrastructure, you won't service your social services, your education, your leisure, your emergency services. And if you're honest as councillors, what do people grumble to you most about? The state of the highways. It reflects the county we live in. We need a decent infrastructure to deliver the services. We've got to look harder at a council, at services we are delivering now that cost us money that we do not have a requirement to deliver. I find it particularly irritating when we're looking at budgets, you can tell me if I'm wrong, please folks, Roger, are we still subsidising the collection of green waste? A job we don't have to do, we can deliver the service, but it must cover its own costs. So I do not support the reduction of any of the services that impact, or any of the monies that impact on our infrastructure. And I think a lot of the public would agree with me.
Okay, thank you councillor. Any other comments? If not, there is a right of reply on the cabinet member for the original motion. Do you wish to have a right to reply councillor Murphy? No, in that case, I will take it to a vote on that particular.
Chairman, may I sum up then on that?
No, no, there is no right to sum up for a proposal of an amendment, sorry. So we now vote on that particular amendment, yeah? So all those in favour of the amendment as proposed by councillor Howarth, which says we delete the cuts in item mandate 41 where it pertains to crews etcetera, all those in favour of that amendment, please show. And all those against? That's defeated. So councillors, we now go back to the original motion and I've got a feeling that councillor Howarth wishes to raise another amendment. So I will come back to you councillor.
Thank you chairman. Mandate 14, school transport. May I just ask a question of joy or even fill? Are we capped by the Welsh Government, reference to the rates increase of 4.95? Yeah?
Can I answer that, chair?
Yes, a point of clarity councillor Murphy.
The minister hasn't, to my knowledge, said at what level she's likely to cap.
The minister hasn't to my knowledge said at what level she's likely to cap. In the past, it's been around five percent, but I think the chief exec has got some information on that. No, no, I just say I was right. Sorry, I didn't quite pick up on what he was mouthing to me. But no, the minister hasn't said, but as I said just now, the general feeling around the principality is that somewhere around five percent is likely to be it.
Thank you councillor Haworth.
Yeah, going back to the mandate then, mandate fourteen, school transport.
Councillor Haworth, could you press your button twice please to bring you back on screen?
Yes. How's that? Yeah, thank you chairman. Mandate fourteen, the SEN transport budget cuts that we're going to implement, I feel really passionate about this, same as I did last year. We cut the transport concessionary travel grants, the Colleguens Bus Pass grant has been cut for pupils which are entering into our mainstream from sixteen plus. We do have a responsibility for these teenagers as a council, we actually promote education of teenagers, the success of them, we've had teenagers here today who actually contribute to Monmouthshire. But we have individuals here who want to do A levels, who want to go to college, who want to further their education. And I think it goes back to the meeting this morning, which is very clear and has been clear with the independent group for some time there, is people who live rural actually severely disadvantaged. Now, let me give you an example then. So if you live in Abegavenny, you live in Chepstow, you live in Caldicott, you live in Monmouth, if you want to do A level or you want to do further education, you have an opportunity to go to the high school. If you live rural, you do not have that opportunity because most people can actually walk to that high school. When you're rural, you cannot walk, you need to have the means of getting there. We as a council cut last year's budget as reference to the provision and it came up today with the ALN transport as well. I feel so strong that these children that we are supposed to be advocates for, who are the, who carry the halo for the future of Monmouthshire, should be given that opportunity of having the access to gain further education chairman. We have children who go to Eber Vale, we have children who go to Hereford College of Technology. We are rural, we don't offer all them courses, we should give them that opportunity chairman. I do propose that to find the monies to support these children, we can means test this, there is the provision to do that. And I quite agree, if the provision is near and they want to go somewhere else, we will not help them. But to give these pupils, these children, these teenagers, a small grant to help them go to where they want to carry out their further education, we as an authority should assist in that. I would like to say, I would like to propose that if we can cap the rates at six percent, which will be an increase of extra one percent, I went to the meetings, which Peter went to and many others went to, and I think the feeling I got from the Monmouthshire residents was is, if we have to pay slightly more to deliver things, they would be willing to have that. And I'd like this ring fencing solely for post sixteen and ALN transport. It would help us out greatly, it would actually remedy a lot of the problems and a lot of the discussions we do, we have had in the last twelve months here. We have a duty and responsibility to make sure these children have a good and further education. Thank you chairman.
Could you phrase what the motion amendment is please councillor?
That the capping, the qualification for the grants and the accessibility to bus service within Monmouthshire, that we would offer a grant to pupils who are entitled to that after testing.
So introduce means testing to that?
Yes. And that would be all pupils, post sixteen and ALN.
Do you have a second of that please? Councillor Blakeborough, you're seconding, okay.
Chairman, can I seek...
Point of clarification from the leader?
I seek clarification. In the funding of the amendment, I understand that what councillor Haworth was saying was that to move to a six percent council tax, is that what we were saying? You said something about six percent. It's the same argument as Dimitri raised earlier. Could you clarify again how you were going to pay for this? Sorry Simon.
Okay, I do believe the Welsh Government have a responsibility also for this. If they have not capped us, or aren't going to cap us, and we have the feasibility to take this forward, we will increase from four point nine five to five point nine five. And I have no problems with that and I'm sure every member shouldn't have a problem with that in this chamber. We have, under the Tory administration, while I've been here, what we've done is, we've played around with no increases, slight increases. Now, we're in a predicament that we must cut services, services which I do believe need to be retained. And this is one of them I feel really passionate about for our teenagers and Monmouthshire.
Could I sort of try and sum up what you've said there Simon? So you're saying is on mandate number fourteen, that you want to introduce more means testing for people who apply for that service, yeah? And the chief executive wishes to clarify a point as well.
I just think I've got what you're trying to say, so I'm going to try and articulate it. I believe what councillor Haworth is suggesting is an amendment which would see the rate increase go from four nine five to five nine five. You are proposing an additional one percentage point, which in round terms is about four hundred thousand pounds. And you are proposing that that is applied to introduce a means tested post sixteen transportation grant.
That is correct, yes.
So you are talking about that your funding, sorry councillor Haworth's funding route is a rate rise and he's talking explicitly about applying that to post sixteen transport?
And that is ring fenced for post sixteen.
Right, okay, now we've got councillor Blakeborough seconded that motion, yes?
Yes.
Right, so we are now debating the amendment, okay? Do you wish to speak now? You can speak now or later councillor Blakeborough.
Now, I have to speak.
Now, okay, carry on.
I think when looking at mandate fourteen, the home to school transport, I want to cast your minds back to this morning.
Sorry, councillor Hackett Payne, you are on the list next. A councillor was seconding the motion, she's got a right to speak when she seconds if she so desires. I will then come to you. Thank you. Councillor Blakeborough, please continue.
Sorry, just fiddling around with this again. Okay. When looking at mandate fourteen, the home to school transport, I just want to cast your mind back to this morning with Will McLean's excellent presentation on the multiple deprivation report with some interesting insights, just four areas to pick out from that as a backfloth to this. Deprivation is the lack of access to opportunities and resources which we might expect in our There is a correlation between low income and low education attainment. And those with no access to private transport are highly challenged. So that came out of that report. What I want to do is first look at the reasons why we should retain post sixteen school transport arrangements. And I want to draw your attention to perhaps an area of funding that we can make some savings but does need exploration, which I have tried but not been able to get full information. And as I say, with the month moving it forward, I've not been able to put that together. So we're looking at the removal of post sixteen travel grants and we're looking to increase charges of a concessionary seat on school transport. That's what this mandate is looking at. So in real terms, what that looks like is all young people, post sixteen, you have to get yourself to school, you have to rely on parents and you have to, or you use public transport, which is a bit sketchy, and that may cost you about five hundred pound a year, or you buy a seat at forty pound a month, that's round about four hundred pound a year in order to get to school. That's what it's like on the ground. These charges can be prohibitively expensive and will disadvantage those young people wanting to continue further education. So why do we need to do everything within our power to enable our young people to access education? Well, research shows that young people who carry on learning and training until eighteen have a higher earning capacity, likely to be more healthy and less likely to be in trouble with the police. Now, don't we want that for our young people in Monmouthshire? It also supports the social mobility and child poverty agenda, which the leader of the Labour Party highlighted this morning. It helps keep young people off the needs list. And good school transport also supports our environmental and road safety strategies by reducing the number of cars on the road. This has been mentioned numerous times, the discriminatory nature of the policy clearly disadvantages those who live in rural areas. Young people don't have a choice as to where they live. Without support, young people aged sixteen plus are at risk of becoming, and it's been mentioned many times, isolated, cut off from social and educational services. Because isn't it important to safeguard our young people's independence and right to access learning opportunities? As we've already experienced, this policy has a particularly severe negative impact on young people with additional learning needs. Now, if all of this is not rationale enough for you to reconsider this service cut, can I ask you to look towards your colleagues over the bridge in Westminster? The Conservative Lib Dem coalition in England are absolutely committed to support post sixteen education through finance and legislation. And it's all for the reasons I've outlined and I'm assuming you support your own group, your own party on that. I don't think it's good enough to blame the Welsh Government's non-statutory status of this policy to basically give you an excuse to make the cut. As the only Conservative Lib Dem controlled authority in Wales, you are the most expensive, you are the worst. I've talked to other authorities, it's from forty pound a term, ten pound a term, you're looking at forty pound a month. Councillor Powell quite rightly raises the EMA, the Educational Maintenance Allowance for those families on low income. But I have to raise again, the thirty pound a week there is towards school equipment, it's towards learning resources in order to study the course, not for school transport. So where are we going to get this money from? I would be suggesting over the last three years, you've missed the opportunity of exploring potential savings from a four hundred and ninety thousand pound annual spend on transporting young people to faith schools and many out-of-county faith schools. This is another non-statutory service, but you've not looked at that. And it's probably too late now and maybe there's some investigations later on. So I'm asking you to make a decision based on principle and common sense, not on the bottom line, not as a way of saving a fast book. I am pleading with you again, every year I plead with you on this, I am pleading with you to do what is right, fair and just for the young people of Monmouthshire and not what is simple and convenient just to balance the books. Thank you chair.
Thank you councillor. And I'll go to councillor Hackett Payne, cabinet member.
Thank you very much chairman. I hope I can rectify this matter because I thought in effect we were debating this year's budget. The proposals that have been discussed and debated were made last year and in effect the savings that come through were on part year. None of those decisions are being made in this budget. I would also like to make the point that as far as the SEN post sixteen transport, it was decided last year, in last year's budget, by councillor Brian Jones, who has the remit for transport, and myself, and listening to what people had to say, that there would be no changes at all in the post sixteen SEN transport. That was not touched. These changes happened last year and yes, we have more work to do and councillor Blakeborough brings up faith etcetera, etcetera. Those are for the future, those are going to be looked at. But I just wanted to make it quite clear that in effect for this year's budget, that was done last year. Those changes were made last year and what is being shown is that full year. And actually, if you read it here, it does say fifteen sixteen savings are a full year effect, the proposals agreed last year. I thought we were discussing this year's budget.
Right, I'm carrying on, I've got a list of names here to talk on councillor Haworth's amendment. And I now go to councillor Hobson.
Yeah, just very quickly, Mr Chairman, thank you. We're talking now a six percent rise and we're playing fast and loose with the public finances because I've been asked today to take a bet, I've been asked to take a punt. Will the minister cap us? Won't they cap us? That is no way to set a budget, that is no way to have stability in our finances. It just, it just can't work that way, you can't behave that way. Everybody knows in local government, it's five percent, anything above that, you're going to get capped. But then also, I feel sorry for those who are on fixed incomes, I feel sorry for people on the minimum wage and the working wage. It'll be six percent for Monmouthshire, then there's a town and community council, then there's fire, when there's police, where's it going to end? Where's it going to end for people who are absolutely stretched at the moment? And we have to be mindful at all times that, you know, it's not our, this is not our money to just spend as we feel like it and raise council tax because another one percent will do something. You know, there are people out there who really are struggling and it's a cumulative effect that is hard hitting. And on council tax, it's indiscriminate, it's not based on your income, it's just based on the house. It doesn't matter how many taxpayers in that house, if there's only one, that person gets hammered. I just feel, you know, you cannot say, oh, we'll raise it another percentage point. We might get capped, we might not. As you know, as residents in Monmouthshire, they want to know where they stand. The budget passes today, we know that we won't be capped and we've got a plan for the next year.
Thank you councillor. We're still debating councillor Haworth's amendment on mandate fourteen and I've got a list of names, I've got councillor Smith, Higginson, Fox and Greenland. So councillor Smith, please.
Chairman, I have an interest to declare, I think it's become apparent to me, I have an involvement with the college, it is not a prejudicial issue, but I filled the form in and I'll stay.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Jim Higginson?
Thank you chairman, it's just a question, it's on mandate fourteen and we're talking about a one percent rise, which will realise up to like about four hundred and thirty thousand-ish. And the revised total at the end of that, at the end of that particular column is two hundred and five thousand pound. Why are we going to one percent if less than half of that was accommodated at particular figure?
Allow councillor Haworth to appoint a clarification on that.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think what we're looking, doing there councillor Higginson, is the children who now have entered into the stream of post sixteen, who didn't have the travel grant this year, we're looking now of introducing back to them, making sure that all post sixteen, that's from financial year fifteen sixteen April, so they will start in September, will be qualified or will have the means of applying for a grant to travel post sixteen. So what we're going to do is, where we battled last year councillor Higginson, to try and save post sixteen, we're going to do it again this year. And that is exactly where we'll have to fund it from. And if the assembly cap us chairman, they cap us. But at least we have tried, we can't blame the assembly, if Welsh, if the English Government are supporting post sixteen, we believe the partnership here should support post sixteen also.
Right, I've got councillor Peter Fox.
Thank you chairman. Only a little bit of clarity. Of course, all of these decisions we've had to make in previous years and future years are going to be hard and I know others will speak on that. I just want some clarity. So let's be clear on the funding of. What you're saying is you are advocating that this council today supports an increase in council tax of six percent virtually, or five nine five, six percent. And you are going to advocate that and or put it forward as a recommendation for this council to consider? And that is the money you would use to fund this? Now, I want to be clear that obviously that is an independent group view and I will be asking for a recorded vote on this one, Mr Chairman, when we get to the amendment on this.
Thank you councillor. I've got councillor Greenland.
Thank you chair. We were accused earlier on of not listening to or taking no notice of public consultation. And I attended all the recent public consultation meetings and I was concerned about the possibility that anything that we did would mean that a child because of low income would not be able to go on to further education. That was a concern that I had. That was a concern that I had as a result of those engagement meetings. And I came back and I asked some questions, and as councillor Hacket Payne has referred, we made these decisions before. But also, what we decided at that point was that there would be a discretionary fund, so that if any child found themselves in the position where they were simply unable to afford further education, and they would have to step down from that because of the increase in that we are proposing, then we would step in to ensure that they were not disadvantaged in that way. Having received that assurance, I'm happy with this mandate.
Okay, I've got councillor Tony Ethan.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Well, I'll test the order. Based on councillor Hacket's comments, am I right to understand that the £115,000 has already been saved? If so, that actually boils down to a quarter of 1%, if you were talking about an increase in precept. I would, am I able to make an amendment to the amendment?
No, we're discussing an amendment at the moment, councillor.
I can't make an amendment.
You can bring a further amendment further down the line, but not while we're debating the amendment.
That's fine, that's okay.
Thank you. Okay, any...
But could councillor Hacket Payne answer that question about the savings of £115,000?
No, I'd reserve that for when you raise your amendment, please.
I'd like to know the question, before I decide where we're going to go.
I can answer it, yes.
Okay, the answer's answered, saves me the problem, right, thank you. Right, have we got any other people who wish to speak who have not already spoken? Councillor Taylor and councillor David Jones. Councillor Taylor.
Just a point of clarification, Chair, as I understand it, if one is on a low income, that is basically people who are in receipt of free school meals, whilst there is a discretionary travel fund, as councillor Greenland says, that still only provides them with up to £190 a year, which I believe is roughly only half of what is required. So there is still a substantial amount of money to be found in households, low-income households, that have a child who is going on to post-16 education and requires transport. That is my understanding. So it's not good enough to just, you know, we were very concerned about it earlier, we were concerned about the lack of choice that it might give our young people, we were concerned about it limiting their social mobility, and obviously, if I'm wrong, I'm more than prepared to be corrected by officers, Roger can no doubt correct me. But my understanding is that there is still a charge, even for families on the lowest, and we're not talking about just low income, we're talking about the very lowest incomes, i.e. those that are entitled to passported benefits such as free school meals. And the threshold for that is only just above £16,000. So once again, we are talking about very low-income families. Can perhaps we can have that clarified, Chair?
Would someone like to clarify that?
Am I right?
Officers will get back to you later, councillor Taylor, that's okay.
Richard Cox told me yesterday, so I'm assuming I'm right.
Right, we've got, I've got one more, councillor David Jones.
Thank you, Chairman. There's a further aspect of mandate 14 that concerns myself and members, parents of some pupils at Llambeangl Creconi School, and a great deal of concern, worry, heartache, and even more worry. We're told the pupils living two miles away from their junior school will not qualify for free school transport. Unfortunately, living in the 21st century does not give us peace of mind when children walk to school. During the last week, we're told that a child in our neighbouring authority was approached by a man in a van on his way to school between seven and eight o'clock in the morning, and this would be a major concern to everyone. Llambeangl Creconi School is approached by travelling along the A465, a major trunk road, with a speed limit of 50mph from the south and 40mph from the north. Some of this route does not have pavements, there is no safe tossing point, and there is a reluctance on behalf of Sutra to help enhance safety along this road. I'm seeking clarification. In the consultative meeting, that one, held in Abingdon, when this issue was discussed, the leader said, and I quote, "If it's unsafe, the child will get free transport." Okay. I'm asking for that reassurance on behalf of parents of Llambeangl Creconi, and the issue will be a concern to all parents and grandparents throughout Monmashia and beyond. May I ask the cabinet member if this situation will be as the leader has said? Thank you, leader. And also, whose assessment of a safe route to school will be taken into consideration and taken as gospel? Thank you.
I think we're debating the school transport policy here, and the amendment that the councillor raised, and I think that might be related to a, I'll allow the clarification to go ahead, but it was slightly off-tack to the original mandate, I think.
It's off, Monday 14.
Thank you very much. You're very right in what you say, and yes, it will depend upon whether the route is safe or not. I think that will actually come from officers, and I'm not quite sure what the criteria is on that, but any child that is deemed to have an unsafe route to school, the transport will continue as it does at present. I know the Pandy Creconi area very well, and I understand where your concerns are coming from.
Right, thank you, councillor. Are there any other points?
I just supplement that, basically, councillor Jones, the safe route to school's policy is the same as it was before, it's only the statutory distance which kicks in. So that's, you know, as councillor Hacket Payne has said, you know, if there is a dangerous route, and that's supported and proved, and our officers, we have a specific officer which will assess those routes, if that is the case, then the transport would be given. And I think there are certain criteria about round pavements, street lighting, different things like that.
Right, thank you. Were any other comments on councillor Howarth's amendment? If not, I'll take that to the vote. So are you all clear in what the amendment was?
Can I ask for a recorded vote, Mr Chairman?
Right, are there nine councillors who are like-minded to yourself? Please stand up if you do. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, yes. It'll be a recorded vote. And I think we need the mandate reiterating. Now, was it written down, or would the chief executive paraphrase again? Councillor Howarth? Councillor Howarth? Chief executive is going to rephrase, to try and phrase your amendment, yeah?
If you can just signal that this is accurate for you when I conclude, the amendment is that the council looks to adjust its approach to raising council tax for the forthcoming year to a rate of 5.9%, 5.95%, rather than 4.95%. The differential in funding raised will be applied to the post-16 transportation arena with a view to introducing a means test approach. I think councillor Howarth, that's what you said, are you content with that? Yeah? Okay.
Okay, then I ask the monitoring officer to proceed with the vote, and he will give instructions.
Yes, thank you, Chairman.
Excuse me, is there a problem, councillor? No, we're going to a vote on an amendment now, councillor, we haven't taken a vote on that amendment yet, so after you could raise another one. Right, please proceed, monitoring officer, Robert.
Thank you, Chairman. What I'm going to do now, then, members, is I'll call out your name, and if you could tell me how you vote to the amendment, please, okay? And if you remember, it's councillor Howarth's proposed amendment. So starting at the top in alphabetical order then, councillor Betroney.
Will be capped, abstain.
Abstain, sorry. Blakber? Crumbs. Burrows? Councillor Chapman? Councillor Clark? Councillor Crook? Is absent. Councillor Davie? Councillor Down? Councillor Easton? Councillor Doug Edwards? Councillor Ruth Edwards? David Evans is absent. Councillor Farley?
Abstain.
Councillor Fox? Councillor George, absent. Councillor Greenland?
Against.
Councillor Guppy? Councillor Hacket Payne? Councillor Harris?
Abstain.
Councillor Haywood? Councillor Hickman? Councillor Higginson?
Abstain.
Councillor Hobson? Councillor Howard? Councillor Howarth? Councillor David Jones? Councillor Penny Jones? Councillor Sarah Jones? Councillor Brian Jones? Councillor Jordan? Councillor Marshall is absent. Councillor Murphy? Councillor Powell? Councillor Prosser? Councillor Smith? It's not a prejudicial interest.
Non-prejudicial interest.
Yeah, okay, so you can vote, councillor Smith.
Four.
Councillor Strong? Councillor Francis Taylor? Councillor Armond Watts? Has left, yeah. Councillor Pauline Watts? Councillor Webb? Councillor White? Councillor Williams?
For, the record, I shall abstain.
And councillor Wintles, absent. Chairman, the amendment has been lost. If members want to know the precise result of the vote, I can do that, okay? Thank you, Chairman. Then the results of the recorded vote are for the amendment, five, against the amendment, 23, and there are, or there were, nine abstentions. So the amendment is lost, Chairman.
Okay, so the amendment is lost, and we go back to the substantive motion, and now we go for further amendments. Councillors, I'm aware we've been here for two hours and 20 minutes. Would you be minded to have a five-minute break? Would it be literally five minutes? Yeah, a refreshment break? All agreed? And we'll continue when we come back, thank you. Thank you. Okay, councillors, could you take your seats, please, so we can reconvene the meeting? Okay, councillors, I hope you're duly refreshed. And we now go back to the substantive motion. And as I indicated just before we recessed, I now go to the next amendment, and I've got Councillor Tony Eason next on the list, and then I've got Councillor Blakeborough after that. So, Councillor Eason.
In relation to the comments that Councillor Hackett Payne made about the penciling in of two fifty sixteen savings, and the full text at the back of the description of the saving, a review of the existing policy be undertaken to identify any further savings, I move an amendment that mandate fourteen be removed from this agenda today, and referred back to the proper committee, and to be really thrashed out, because this is a very contentious issue. It ain't going to go away. Parents, as they come along, are going to still continue to agitate for better transport for their children. I think it's important that we address it, and I would like to move the amendment that we remove mandate fourteen from this deliberation today.
Right, councillor, here your amendment. Do you have a second for that proposal?
Roger Harris.
Do you have a second, there?
Roger Harris.
Councillor Roger Harris, okay. So we're now debating the proposal which is to remove mandate fourteen completely from the undertaking of the budget. So I'm inviting comments on that, please, from councillors. Councillor Blake.
I'm happy with that, for all the reasons I highlighted earlier. Because I want to retain that post sixteen transport arrangements in particular, because that's only one hundred and thirty thousand they're looking to save. And as I say, I think we found some of the money in the four hundred and ninety thousand pound budget transporting young people to faith schools. And I think saying that we can get one hundred and thirty thousand from the four hundred and ninety is as substantive a mandate as the additional learning needs. Going to stick my finger up in the air, and that's their approach. We're going to save one hundred and twenty, not sure where from. I'm saying I reckon we could save some money in that four hundred and ninety. Councillor Hackett Payne has said you're already looking at this. Don't understand why you didn't look at that three years ago, because if you had, we would have made savings and we wouldn't have this discussion, hopefully on mandate fourteen.
Right, have I got any other contributions on this? Councillor Hackett Payne.
Thank you very much. If it was as easy as that, yes, we would have done it three years ago. But it isn't quite as simple as just charging for faith. You've also got to look at other aspects. If you do that for faith, we also need to look at Welsh medium, and that is where we're looking at the moment. You have to be able to offer a school, a nearest suitable school, and if you have children that are accessing faith schools, we don't have a faith school in our county. So we have to transport out of county. So, in effect, if it was that easy, we'd have done it.
Right, any more comments on Councillor Howarth?
May I ask, Councillor Hackett Payne, is that a non-statutory provision to carry out that?
Again, it depends on whether you're looking at post sixteen, whether you're looking at secondary school, and it depends also on the nearest suitable school. In effect, if you, I've just explained that, but in effect, yes, we do need to do that if it is the nearest school, because we have to transport to the nearest suitable school if it's of faith or Welsh medium, because we don't have that facility in our own county.
Right, any other contributions? I want to keep you minded that this proposal is to remove the mandate fourteen completely from the list, in which case I would invite reasons for how are you going to fill the gap on the budget, yeah? Which is, you know, common sense and that said. So that's the contributions I'm looking for. So I've got Councillor Petroni. Is there anyone else who wish to talk on this motion? If not, I'll take it to a vote. So the motion is to delete mandate fourteen from the list of budget proposals, yeah? So all those in, yeah, all those in favour of the amendment, please show by raising hands. All those against? That's lost, thank you. Therefore, we revert back to the original motion, as presented by Councillor Murphy. So are there any more amendments that want to be presented? If not, we will debate the substantive motion. If you wish to do more debating. If there are no further submissions, I will go to a vote. Councillor Dow.
Yes, Chairman. First of all, I would like to thank the administration. Last year, to a man, they voted, and a woman, they voted against a proposal which we, as an independent group, put forward. This year, it's in the mandate. Typically, they've not had the good grace to give us credit for it, but as Ronald Reagan used to say, "It's amazing what you can achieve if you don't care who gets the credit." So we're grateful for that, although there are other things that are not in there that we would have supported. Also, Chairman, just to revert to the start of this debate, I will be writing to the Monitoring Office, asking whether it is within the remit of the Cabinet to change a decision of full council. I think it was last May that we approved the Council diary, which specifically said that the budget and council tax debates would be in February, and Cabinet has changed that. I just want to be sure of the grounds for doing it. But I'll write him on that point. Again, we started this debate by talking, as we do every year, about the settlement that we in Monmouthshire get from the Welsh Government. You know, I really do think it suits some people that we are bottom of the heap. They keep talking about battering down the doors of the minister to try and get it changed. If they were serious about getting it changed, they wouldn't go anywhere near the minister, because the minister doesn't deal with it. It's a matter dealt with by an agreement between the WLGA and Welsh Government officers and officials, and if they were serious about getting things changed, they'd be working at alliances with other counties in a similar position in the WLGA, not generating the hot air about ministers. Now, we have before us a budget. We're asked to support a budget which produces a council tax rise which is ten times the rate of inflation, or three times the rate of average earnings growth, with a whole lot of cuts and savings as well. Specifically, education is one of our priority areas, and an area such a priority that they've taken a hammering to it. We are told that there will be no increase in the budget for schools to meet pay pensions and general inflation. And yet, when we look at the mandate, the impact of that is stated to be, quotes, "may result in more schools moving into a deficit position, requiring a budget recovery plan." Well, I'll be blowed. We're told that we're going to be cutting the additional learning needs budget. We're told that we're going to be introducing the most expensive post sixteen transport in the whole of Wales. I would like to know what debate, consultation and scrutiny there has been of these proposals by the Cabinet members responsible. I ask that question for a very simple reason. You will remember that last spring, there was a proposal which came forward for charging for the childcare elements of preschool breakfasts. And it was hurriedly removed by the Cabinet on the grounds that more work was required. That was better part of a year ago. I'm not sure how long it takes to do this extra work, but never mind. We did a Freedom of Information request. We asked for details of all the meetings which had taken place between the Cabinet member and officers to discuss that. We asked for copies of notes of meetings, copies of notes of telephone conversations, copies of emails, et cetera. There was just one email from the Cabinet member to the, I think it was the director, an email which contained two words: "Sounds great." Now, that doesn't sound to me like particularly detailed scrutiny of a proposal. I may have missed something, but it doesn't sound particularly great to me. So I want to know what confidence I can have in the Cabinet's detailed scrutiny of the proposals which are before us, because we have a budget here which I can't support. I can't put against it, because I just don't know. Councillor Greenland said, "We need solid budget proposals." Well, I've looked through these mandates and I don't see solid budget proposals there. Councillor Hobson, "We need an evidential base." "We're being asked to take a punt," he said. Well, we're certainly being asked to take a punt with these proposals. "That's no way to set a budget," said Councillor Hobson. Never was a truer word spoken. First of all, let's start from the beginning. There's a shortfall, so we haven't set a budget at all. There's still four hundred and forty-three thousand pounds short of where we need to be. And then when we look through the budget mandates, we see, for example, I've got a list of them here, schools music service, we're going to double the termly price for lessons from fifteen pounds fifty to thirty-one pounds. When the charge was introduced, there was a substantial drop-off in the number of students who took lessons. That's in the mandate, it says. So what confidence can we have in the figure that they have arrived at for the extra income that will be generated? There's a property review for community buildings. Now, I have long felt that we have been too ready to allow community organisations to have access to redundant buildings. Some of our towns have almost as many community buildings as private buildings, it sometimes seems. Every time we tries to close a facility, someone says, "Oh, let's have a community centre, let's have this, let's have that." So I'm in favour of rationalising community buildings. We are supposedly going to cut our spending by ten thousand pounds by reducing the rental grant. Now, it's voluntary organisations, local community organisations who rent these premises. What sort of impact is that going to have on them? Will it actually mean a reduction in the amount of community activity? The ICT mandate talks about income of a hundred thousand pounds, and it states two sources of that increased income: a five thousand pounds dividend from SRS Business Solutions Limited, and ten thousand pounds from CCTV. Now, try as I might, I can't get ten plus five to equal a hundred. A waste, we're going to reduce staff on litter picking and fly tipping. And yet you drive around our countryside and see the amount of litter that there is, and we're cutting the staff. The removal of the nappy service. Now, I suppose I should declare an interest as a grandfather, although my granddaughter doesn't, isn't actually in Monmouthshire, but nevertheless, that is a service which is very important, and to remove it is simply unacceptable. In democratic services, the extent of the mandate there is we're going to raise a hundred and ten thousand pounds through a management restructure, increased income generation and a reduction in the mileage budget. Nowhere are we told where we're going to get this income generation for, from. Nowhere are we going to told what a management restructure is going to look like. We were told at the engagement meeting, or at least at the one that I attended in Chepstow, that we were going to raise two hundred thousand pounds from the youth service providing training opportunities. And when we look at the mandate, eighty thousand pounds come from, I think it's called a Prospel Training Academy, and hundred and twenty thousand pounds from the wellbeing activities. And fine, that adds up to two hundred thousand pounds, you got that one right. Except that, that two hundred thousand pounds, both of those figures are gross, not net. There must be some costs associated with providing those. Where are they? So, Mr Chairman, the long and the short of it is, I would love to support the budget which is in front of us, but unfortunately, as Councillor Hobson reminded us, I'm not going to take a punt, and this is no way to set a budget.
Thank you, councillor. And I'll go to Councillor Hackett Payne. We are still discussing the substantive motion.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I would like to come back on quite a few points that have been raised today. The first point, in effect, was, I can remember back to our last Cabinet meeting, or the meeting before, where I think it was the independent group told us that they were going to come with an alternative budget, they were just waiting for training on the equalities impact assessment, so. No, but I think that was arranged on the day for that to actually happen. I'm not disputing, but I think the dates were known then. What I would like to say is just picking up on the budget, and, in effect, bringing a little bit of reality into this, because there have been a couple of quite outrageous claims made today, and I just want to put those to bed, in effect. This is, in effect, a matter of economic reality. The reality is that we are all having to tighten our belts and being responsible in helping to get our country back on its financial feet. The reality of this is global, and it's actually bigger than any of us sat here today. The reality of that situation is that every council in the country is having to go through the very same process that we're going through, this difficult process of basically running services with less money. If you look at the Vale of Glamorgan, they've got an exercise on consulting with the public.
Councillor.
I have a question on Councillor Hackett Payne's comments. You made a comment that this problem is global, so we won't be getting any more rhetoric that it's all through the last Labour government in Westminster.
No, 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 so, please sit down. Carry on, councillor. A point of clarity is when you feel that you've been misrepresented, so please carry on, councillor.
Am I correct, then, I was not, I was fine?
Continue with your presenting.
I was making the point that we are all having to do this, all councils. If that budget was going to be reduced by 4.3% like the council budget is, we would be looking to having to find, getting on for two and a quarter million pounds from the budget. We're not. Another fact, the delegated schools budget, the amount of money that goes to schools. Last year was £43,132,437. Do you know how much it is this year? The same, apart from about £35,000 to do with less pupils. The budgets are virtually the same. This is a fact. Yes, schools will have to pick up the pension and the pay increase pressures. But another fact, in your average primary school, that will not equate to the cost of a teacher or the cost of a teaching assistant, will not do so. We've heard speculations about standards and quite rightly so, because we need to maintain standards within the county for various reasons, but also we have the inspection looming. And with the EAS, the Education Achievement Service, Monmashia County Council...
A point of clarification, councillor Hacket Payne says that the average impact on a primary school would not amount to the cost of a teacher or a classroom assistant. According to the mandate, it would have a budget reduction amounting to circa £18,297.
It's about £12.
I don't know of many classroom assistants who are on £18,297.
Continue councillor. Could you press your button twice?
The EAS, the Education Achievement Service with Monmashia County Council, has a rigorous system in place so that every child has a target for achievement. This is assessed on a termly basis by the authority and the EAS and in the classroom this is on a daily basis. Each school has a school improvement plan that maps out the progress of each school and their aspirations as far as standards are concerned within that school. This is put in place with the conjunction of the governors, so those of you that are governors, you will know this process. And going back to other authorities, most have adopted exactly the same approach as Monmashia County Council has. Additional learning needs, a lot has been said about additional learning needs and I am so pleased that this is so high on the agenda because it is a very important subject and it is important to the cabinet and obviously to the Directorate. I think in some respects, the mandate could have been clearer, yes, I accept that. And I think the reason for that probably was that when we're talking about children with additional learning needs, there is always a sensitivity there and the numbers are quite small within the county. And I think there is always an element of not wanting people to know exactly what, where the areas are and who those children are. So I think that that probably was there as an element of help, but I will explain that further. The facts, the budget for the ALN is approximately six and a half million. And the other fact about additional learning needs, I am quite happy to take any flak, any criticism about the review of additional learning needs, because nothing has been reviewed for over 10 years. I think we owe the children in our county who have support with additional learning needs more than that. I think the service does need to be reviewed. In the last 10 years, the needs of those children has changed greatly. There are more children accessing a service with autism and various elements that we hadn't dealt with before. So in that 10 years, the needs have changed greatly in the county. So this review would be happening anyway, because it needs to be done. There is no other service, I don't think, in the whole county that hasn't been reviewed in 10 years. But again, because of the sensitivities, it tends not to be. Officers have started this review, as I'm sure you're all aware, from the member seminar that we had, are looking at the strategic review of additional learning needs and a new policy has come forward. This is the beginning of our review of additional learning needs. And each review fits in together. The, sorry, you're going to stop me there?
No, you're getting near your limit councillor, you've got one minute left.
Okay. The numbers, just to put again, the numbers with additional learning needs are normally about three to seven in a primary school and we've got under 50 in our secondary school. Basically, what we are doing in this year's budget, we are looking at Derry View School and that's really why the sensitivity was there. And actually looking at the majority of the children in that facility we have there could actually be taught back into the mainstream schooling and that support will go with them. So, but in effect, from speaking to parents, we know that this is what parents want. They would rather have their children taught back in the community than in effect in a special unit for additional learning needs. So this has come from parents themselves and I know this because I have actually spoken to the parents and this is their, they're the main drivers for this review. The review will go on next year and we will be looking at the whole of the facilities within the county for additional learning needs across the board. We will be looking at children that are out of county, is there any way we can bring them in? We will be looking at Mountain House, anything to do with additional learning needs, so that the service we provide will be the best service we can for the needs of the children with additional learning needs in the county.
Thank you councillor. And I'll go to councillor Douglas Edwards.
Yeah, thank you Chairman. Can I go all the way back to a question which was raised by councillor Howarth earlier on, with reference to the hubs in Abegavenny and the hubs elsewhere? It's on page 42, clause 318. That's an extract from a report prepared by Mrs Robson, our chief financial officer. And the statement actually says that the finance team have assumed that proposals in Abegavenny, in other words, the creation of a hub, will be funded from the capital already allocated to the library. Now, the answer we got from the cabinet member, you know, tended to push this off into the future and quite frankly, I think it's such an important issue. It's part of our budget, it means that if we use the capital sum which was for the new library in Abegavenny, means that there is no real serious pressure on the overall budget of the council. If we're going to introduce, well, we have introduced, the Whole Place Plan, it's not only Abegavenny, the Whole Place Plan in our area is Brynigom. So that 3.5 million which is designated for the library, I think it's slightly less than 3.5, means that the whole of the area would benefit. I think Abegavenny has become, or Abegavenny's area has become the last town to have serious investment. We are, we have been made considerable sacrifices by getting rid of our cattle market and that has generated, or will generate if we ever get the money, 16.75 million pounds. So Abegavenny is making a real major cash injection into the overall budget. It would, it should strike you members actually, if new schools are costing 32,000, 33,000, it means that Abegavenny has already paid for the match funding, if you like, for its school, which is not due to be built for a couple of years' time. We also, of course, provide considerable amount of income through the car parks, I think something over 50, about 60% of the gross income, which is 1.3 million, comes out of Abegavenny and its car parks. So we make this very valuable contribution, so I think it's essential and I think we would like some sort of commitment from councillor Bob Greenland. Simon asked the original question, I'm hoping that we now have a much more positive answer, that in the very near future, that 3.5 million will be ring fenced for the Brynigom area. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. I've now got councillor Peter Fox.
Yeah, thank you Chairman. We're talking to substantive motion and I obviously would like to move us toward the recommendations, but before I do, I just want to pick up where I started earlier and then finished about just thanking everybody for their commitment. Now things have cooled down a tad, I just want to just reiterate, I thank the Labour Group for bringing forward their budget proposals. We've had, we've made our challenge, we believe they were, it was, you know, pity we hadn't have seen those earlier. However, as councillor Murphy has said, we will take those forward and discuss those and look for them in the future round of things. So at least thank you for trying on that. Just to reflect briefly on what councillor Downe said, which, as predictable, it was an articulate debate, but I was somehow let down because I was then expecting an amendment or an alternative budget or something, because that's what usually comes forward. But today, all we've heard from the independents is the fact that they want to raise council tax to 6% and stop funding transport to denominational schools. So I was really, really surprised about that. But he did make a point about us banging down the doors of the Welsh Assembly and things like that. And he's quite right, the WLGA, in discussion with civil servants, did originally create the formula and there is a forum which comes together now and again, which looks at things like that. And believe me, those of us certainly in rural authorities have been banging away ever since I've been a leader, unsuccessfully I admit, to alter that formula, to recognise some of those things like rurality as a clear indicator of deprivation, as well as all of the other things we talked about earlier today. And at the end of the day, I am sure that ministers do have an influence over how that and what amendments can be made to a formula, as we would with our school budget formula, for instance. So there is a huge amount of work going on with the WLJ, continuous, and the WLJ Rural Forum as well, where rural authorities like this one come together. It's on our agenda constantly, but we can't get away from the fact, we are still where we are. And, you know, we're not bemoaning that situation really, we state the fact, but we're doing something about it. We want to preserve services, we want to retain a strong service offering in Monmashia. We do not want to turn services off because we know when we've turned them off, they're gone and they're gone forever. We don't want that. We want to be in a position where we can retain as many things as possible. However, as the mandate describes, we may need to do those things in different ways. But as I said, we will be having a library in every town as we have at the moment. We will have leisure centres, we will have a youth service. You know, we know there's some difficult decisions around waste and we are asking people to, you know, to provide their own black bags instead of grey bags. And we are sad that we're having to move to the yellow bag collection to fortnightly. We accept these are difficult decisions, but we're a responsible administration. You know, with this budget has been thought out, it's thoughtful, it's had a huge amount of input from so many people in there and it is strong and people will always find faults, we know that. But it is the best thing, best attempt, well, it's the best budget we could come with, with all of the pressures we are facing and I'm proud. Not that I enjoy moving difficult budgets, but I'm proud that we've done this in such an inclusive and open way. And this is where I go back to what councillor Downe says, I just can't understand all of this, you know, that they don't know anything, they haven't got involved. Well, if they turned up now and again to some things and got involved, perhaps they might have had some insight into that. Mr Chairman, I'll end there and move us to the recommendations if I can, but I certainly hope that we can get there in the very near future.
Right, thank you councillor. I've got two more to speak and then I might need to move to the vote, yeah? So I've got councillor Taylor and councillor Devi to speak on the substantive motion. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you Chair. Again, a lot, a number of people have used the words outrageous. So councillor Hacket Payne said that we've made outrageous claims. I'm not sure what outrageous claims we've made, other than the budget mandates have, certain budget mandates have been opaque, unclear, and that is acknowledged by certain members of the administration. That is not an outrageous claim, that is an absolutely fundamental and important point. And I did not say there had been absolutely no meaningful consultation. I said there was certainly not meaningful consultation on the mandate that came forward for ALN, because if you cannot demonstrate that the information you are giving people to be informed about and make a meaningful contribution is clear and appropriate, then that does not conform to the principles of good consultation and it certainly does not satisfy our duty under the Equalities Act. I think that it's also, it's, you know, by way of personal explanation, it's not right to say that people should turn up to places and make throwaway comments like that. Some people have been very engaged in supporting this process, although given the scrutiny that it would seem that some cabinet members have given the budget proposals that have come forward, it's certainly questionable whether it's useful and right and a good use of one's time to invest that next year. If, as councillor Hacket Payne says, councils are making these decisions all over the UK and I know that they are, one would hope that their cabinet members are giving some of the proposals that come forward more serious and appropriate scrutiny. I am slightly disappointed to hear the chief executive say that he thinks due process has been observed, because I still maintain that in the latter part of the consultation, it would not have been possible to put something, a meaningful proposal in for consideration because this meeting has been brought forward. And finally, I would just like to say that one acknowledges that there are very difficult decisions to be made, but as has been pointed out, there are choices within those decisions. And I could argue that it's not for me to explain myself to the cabinet, it's for the cabinet to explain themselves to us. If there are further savings to be found, why haven't they been supporting officers to look further at those? I've certainly, taking Graham's point, that, you know, it's amazing what you can get done if you don't mind who takes the credit. I certainly thought that that was the way to go this year, given the decisions that have to be made, although I was really disappointed that that still couldn't bear any fruit because there was not clarity that the budget would be discussed today as opposed to the normal time which is in February.
Right, and now go to councillor David Devi.
Thank you Chairman. It's really quite an unusual council meeting today because Ronald Reagan has raised his head twice in here today, once amongst a conversation we had and now, but that's aside. The issue for me is perhaps, we've been talking about cuts and this is something that I am really very interested in and have raised on a number of occasions. And that is with regard to special needs education and the fact that we've got the Mountain House facility in the county. It's an excellent facility and yet as I see it from a past governor's point of view...
Mr Chairman, can I declare an interest as I have a member of family who worked at a Mountain House?
Okay, interest noted. You need to fill appropriate forms in and see whether it's prejudicial or not.
Yeah, well, my wife worked there.
Excuse me Leader, whilst of course this is a matter for you at the end of the day, we're discussing here the budget... We're discussing here the budget as a whole, we're not talking about Mountain House, of clearly your interests, would I, would it maybe become prejudicial there? But because we're talking about the budget as a whole, because we're listening to councillor Devi's observations on the budget, I don't think you need to leave this meeting.
I thank you for that. If I feel that the debate gets in deeper depth, obviously, I'll declare that prejudice and leave. Thank you.
I suspect, chairman, I'm not going to say anything that is going to embarrass the leader, but the point I want to make, we have this, we have this facility, which I was chair of governors for some eleven years, is something rather like that, and since, over the past few years, it seems to me that this facility is just foundery. There doesn't seem to be any positive thought coming out to an interested party like me, but it doesn't seem to be coming out anyway, and by the way, my wife has resigned as governor from there, so I free her now. And I'm very concerned about this, because it's a great facility, and it would be a very good means of earning some money if we came with a rational programme for its future, and I'd like, perhaps, if we could hear something from councillor Hackett Payne as to how this facility features in the future for the county and how it can be used to earn some money rather than cut it.
Thank you, councillor. Well, I'll allow councillor Hackett Payne to respond to that, and then I think I'll go to the vote then, so I'll just, councillor Hackett Payne?
Thank you, thank you very much, I will be brief. We're reviewing all of the facilities, and Mountain House is obviously one of those. We will be speaking to parents and taking the way forward that is for the needs of those children. You're right, that Mountain House is, you know, a good facility, but in effect, I think it probably could, it's the needs of the children that are there, and that, again, has changed, which I've mentioned before, and I think we could actually be helping a lot more children within that facility, but that work has to be done yet, that review is going to take place over the next year, so I can't add any more than that.
Right. I will now go to councillor Murphy to... No, no, you've said you say councillor, and the cabinet members responded. I now go to councillor Phil Murphy to round up, sum up for the main motion. Councillor?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I think most of the points that have been raised now have been dealt with by cabinet colleagues and others, but just one or two little points on Graham's presentation, and he obviously wasn't listening at the Chelmsford meeting when I did actually acknowledge the fact that it was an idea put forward by members last year, and I spoke about our intentions, whenever this situation happens where there's a good idea, we'll use it in the medium-term financial plan, and I've repeated today to councillor Patroney that I would be doing exactly the same with some of the ideas that his group has put forward, and I repeat that now. As regards the rest of it, with the school's music service, we're not putting the charges up to the school music service, putting the charges up, not us, and with an happy service, as the leader said, it's not being removed, it's just being moved to fortnight nightly collections. So I think that has cleared up all of the outstanding points, chairman, and, as you say, I think it's time that we went to the recommendations to the vote.
Okay, councillors, so we now move to the vote on this budget proposal. I won't read them all out. We take it as a package, and you've got it listed there. Right, so it's recommended the following be approved. Revenue estimates for the year 2015-2016 as recommended by the Cabinet at its meeting on the 7th of January 2015, appendix I. B, the capital programme for 2015-16 to 2018-19, including the additional schemes and funding notes in 3.1.8 and 3.1.9, as recommended by Cabinet at its meeting of 7th of January 2015, appendix J1. C, the disposal assets of best value. D, 4.95% increase in the band. D, equivalent council tax to apply for county purposes in 2015-16. So could you all indicate, all those in favour of that motion, please indicate.
Twenty-two.
And all against? Thank you, clearly carried. We now move on to item 8b on the agenda, which is council tax reduction scheme, and I assume I ask councillor Murphy to present.
Yes, Chair, this is a repeat of the procedures that are already in place, and you note within the recommendations that there's a section there that refers to not bringing this back every year unless there's material changes in it. So the proposals are to carry on as is. There is a requirement for us to adopt this, by Welsh Government, to adopt this scheme by the end of January, otherwise their own scheme will be imposed, which will be less advantageous to residents of the county.
Thank you, councillor. Do you have a second after that proposal? Councillor Fox, does anyone wish to comment on the matter? No? Okay, then we go straight to a vote. So all those in favour of the recommendations as listed in the proposal table today, please indicate. Clearly carried, thank you, councillors. We now move on to item nine on the agenda, members' questions, none received, and therefore I thank you all for your attendance today. We've had a good debate, we're in difficult times, difficult decisions have to be made, and I think we've given it a good airing, and not everybody's pleased with everything, and I understand that, but thank you for your contribution today, and I declare the meeting closed.